Good afternoon and welcome to the New York City Council's hearing on consumer and worker protection. At this time, we ask that you silence all electronic devices and at no time is anyone to approach the dais. If you have any questions, please see one of the sergeant at arms back here. Chair, we're ready to begin.
Good afternoon and welcome to the fiscal 2025 preliminary budget hearing. My name is Julie Menon and I'm the new chair of the Committee of Consumer and Worker Protection. This afternoon, we will be reviewing the proposed budget for the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection, also, of course, known as DCWP. Specifically, we will be assessing various DCWP programs and activities to ensure that the agency is serving the public in a fiscally responsible way, as well as meeting the needs of New Yorkers. For some context, the fiscal 2025 preliminary budget for the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection totaled $62 million, which includes $31.2 million in personal services to support 447 budgeted full-time positions. The budget also includes $30.8 million in other than personal services to cover all other general operating expenses of the agency. The funds in this fiscal plan are primarily allocated to resolve consumer and worker complaints, issue numerous licenses, educate and protect consumers, and ensure that businesses comply with the law. At today's hearing, we will examine the components of DCWP's budget. We would like the Commissioner to tell us about the agency's performance with in terms of conducting inspections and issuing summons, as well as how the agency is dealing with headcount and attrition issues. We would like the agency to explain how it collects revenues and how it projects revenue generating activity in the next fiscal year. I also have concerns about the Office of Financial Empowerment, also known as OFE, and savings in the November plan that negatively impacted expansions for programs that were baseline in the adopted budget. The Office of Financial Empowerment helps New Yorkers keep money in their pockets and food on their family's table. Proposed cuts that may impact the office's work, particularly during tax season, are concerning. I want to know how these cuts will impact New Yorkers' wallets during tax season. While I understand that DCWP does not have the legal authority over illicit cannabis shops, I'm interested in collaborating to see what ideas and possible solutions can be created to help protect New Yorkers from unlicensed cannabis sales and what the preliminary budget does to support the agency amidst the proliferation of illegal cannabis shops and the burgeoning of the legal cannabis industry. DCWP is an agency for everyday New Yorkers. I always like to say that there is not any New Yorker that does not have a consumer protection issue because we are all consumers of various products. And so it helps protect them from harmful business practices and it supports workers and consumers in myriad ways. Having a personal history previously serving as Commissioner of this agency, these and other issues are of deep concern to me. I look forward to this hearing on the preliminary budget and the priorities that the agency has. I want us to be in partnership in this search to provide a safer place for New Yorkers to work, shop, and live. And I now, at this point, want to welcome DCWP's Commissioner, Vilda Vera Mayega, First Deputy Commissioner Kenny Minana, Assistant Commissioner for External Affairs Carlos Ortiz, and General Counsel Michael Tiger. We look forward to an active engagement with the administration over the next few months to ensure that the fiscal 2025 preliminary budget meets the goals that the council has set out. So at this point, I am now going to ask the committee counsel to swear in the members of the administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Menon. Good morning and welcome. My name is Sarah Swain, Counsel to the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection. I will be moderating this hearing. Before we begin, I would like to remind everyone who is joining us via Zoom, you will be on mute until you are called on to testify, at which point you will be asked to accept to be unmuted by the host. I will be calling on public witnesses to testify after the conclusion of the administration's testimony and council member questions, so please listen carefully for your name to be called. Please note that council members will have five minutes for questions and we will allow for a second round if needed. We will now call on representatives from the administration to testify. Administration panelists, please raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to council member questions?
I do.
I do.
I do.
Thank you. At this time, you may present your testimony.
Good afternoon, Chair Menon and members of the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection. I am Vilda Vera Mayuga, Commissioner of the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection, DCWP, and I am joined by members of my senior leadership team, Kenny Minaya, Michael Tiger, and Carlos Ortiz. It is our pleasure to be here today before this committee to testify on the work of our agency and its budget for fiscal year 2025. Chair Menon, as you will know through your work leading this agency, DCWP provides consumer and worker protections and financial empowerment programming to New Yorkers. We strive to ensure that consumers who have been deceived or exploited have recourse, that workers have a passionate defender of their rights, and that all New Yorkers have the support they need to improve their financial health. I am immensely proud of the work this agency accomplishes day in and day out for our city. Under Mayor Eric Adams' leadership, DCWP has helped deliver $319 million into the pockets of New Yorkers through restitution, debt relief, and financial empowerment programming. In my opinion, this is some of the most critical work happening in our city because it so directly impacts the lives of New Yorkers. Today, I am excited to share some of our mission-focused successes from the past year with all of you. But first, let me provide the committee with some important background on the agency. DCWP's preliminary budget for fiscal year 2025 is approximately $62 million. As Chair Menon shared earlier, our authorized headcount stands at 447, with an all-time high of 421 active personnel. Our agency licenses more than 46,000 businesses and individuals in more than 40 industries. Last year, we carried out almost 42,000 inspections and nearly 1,300 consumer and worker protection investigations on behalf of New Yorkers, securing more than $14.5 million in restitution for New Yorkers. Our financial empowerment centers and other services were utilized by nearly 10,000 New Yorkers, and New York City Free Tax Prep also completed almost 85,000 tax returns. One of the administration's highlights of the past year has been our announcement of the nation's first minimum pay rate for app-based restaurant delivery workers, one of the most significant advancements of workers' rights in New York City's history. Delivery workers brave snowstorms, rain, wildfire smoke, and even the pandemic to make sure New York is fed. Yet, until the minimum pay rate, they received poverty-level compensation for their work. DCWP and this administration faced several challenges in delivering this monumental pay rate. We are incredibly grateful for this council's support, the efforts of the city's law department, and, most importantly, the outstanding advocacy of the delivery workers who fought hard to ensure that this dignified pay rate took effect. Delivery workers are now seeing their weekly pay double, and the impact this has had on the tens of thousands of delivery workers and their families is immeasurable. With the rate increasing to $19.56 an hour on April 1st, we will continue to stand shoulder to shoulder with delivery workers, collaborate on compliance, and ensure that apps pay them every cent they are entitled to under our laws. Moving on to our other workplace laws we enforce, last year, we announced several victories on behalf of workers and secured $12.5 million in worker restitution. In 2023, we resolved nearly 800 worker protection cases under our key workplace rights and laws, including our Fair Work Week law, which provides fast food and retail workers the right to a predictable schedule. This law fosters stability and a healthy work-life balance for thousands in these industries. Under our paid safe and sick leave law, covered workers are entitled to use safe and sick leave for the care and treatment of themselves or a family member. We thank the council for their work to enact Local Law 22 of 2024, which allows workers to file a private right of action for violations of the paid safe and sick leave law. All of our worker protection cases demonstrate to the residents of our city that we are a dedicated resource for them in the workplace and that we will fight to ensure that their rights are safeguarded. We proactively educate workers on their protections, the actions to take if their rights are violated, and provide relief for those whose rights are violated. Since the landmark consumer protection law was enacted in 1969, we have been the nation's leading municipal consumer protection agency. We have consistently leveraged our authority to protect New Yorkers from deceptive business practices, securing restitution for consumers whose rights have been violated by debt collectors, furniture stores, and used car dealers, to name a few. Last year, we secured more than $2 million for aggrieved consumers across the city. A major highlight of our work to make consumers whole was our case against a group of six used car dealerships, 26 motors. In April of last year, we charged more than 9,500 violations at the Office of Administrative Trials and Hearings related to the dealership's deceptive practices, business practices. We have zero tolerance for businesses that repeatedly display patterns of preying on hard-working New Yorkers. Some of our most significant marketplace enforcement includes our work to stop the proliferation of unlicensed tobacco and electronic cigarette retail dealers. We work diligently on this issue and have a team dedicated specifically to tobacco enforcement that conducted nearly 16,000 inspections of tobacco retail dealers and electronic cigarette retail dealers last year. In 2023, we issued over 7,600 summonses for illegal activity, collected $9.5 million in fines, and in the last year, have shut down more than 100 illegal tobacco dealers. We look forward to working with you, Chair Menon, on granting the agency authority to close unlicensed e-cigarette retailers as well. Last year, we started our collaboration with our partners at the Fire Department to address issues of e-bike and lithium-ion battery fires. Our implementation of Local Law 39 led the city's efforts to ensure to target unsafe mobility devices and get them out of our retail shops. Since Local Law 39 took effect, we have conducted approximately 500 inspections of businesses and issued summonses to 114 brick-and-mortar and 19 online retailers. We look forward to the strengthened enforcement tools in this law, thanks to council member Brewer's legislation. I'd also like to thank you, Chair Menon, for your legislation, Local Law 151 of 2023, which allows businesses to cure violations instead of being penalized, and also right-size fines for other violations they might incur. From our agency's reforms alone, we project business savings to be almost $1 million each year, providing substantive relief to New York City's small businesses. We're excited to work with you and your office on moving forward important legislation to reform and modernize many of our licensed categories to reduce the burdens on small businesses. We are dedicated to providing protections to New Yorkers while working to facilitate compliance amongst businesses with the laws that we enforce. Our Visiting Inspector Program, or VIP, provides new licensees the opportunity to receive an educational visit from one of our inspectors. At this visit, the inspector will share information about the regulations the business needs to follow and will identify any potential violations, offering businesses a chance to go into compliance and avoid future penalties. Just yesterday, we announced an expansion of this program to all brick-and-mortar businesses that are required to be in compliance with our laws, regardless of whether we license their business category. We're excited to be expanding our education-first approach to enforcement. Lastly, as many of you know, we offer free financial empowerment programs to support individuals and help households improve their financial health. The New York City Financial Empowerment Centers provide opportunities for New Yorkers to meet with trained counselors for one-on-one, confidential financial counseling at no cost. These counselors coach individuals in reaching financial goals by establishing budgets, creating spending plans, opening affordable bank accounts, and navigating loan repayment, including student loan debt. Our Financial Empowerment Centers hit a major milestone last year, helping New Yorkers reduce their overall debt by more than $100 million since the program's inception. My family and I benefited from our agency's free financial and counseling. I was very excited last year to discuss how our dedicated financial counselors coached me through navigating my finances and the federal Public Service Loan Forgiveness Program. Since then, I have sought ways to help encourage participation in the Public Service Loan Forgiveness Program amongst our colleagues in city government. Our team has begun rigorously targeted outreach to the 300,000 city employees who are eligible for public service loan forgiveness. We strive to be a leader in supporting the city government workforce, to enroll in the program to aid in relieving a projected $3.4 billion in student loan debt. Another incredible program that we offer to New Yorkers is our New York City Free Tax Prep Program, which offers city residents access to free professional tax preparation support and filing. Our tax preparers are trained to help New Yorkers with low to moderate incomes maximize their tax refunds by optimizing the use of various tax credits, including the New York City Earn Income Tax Credit that Mayor Adams expanded last tax season. Last year, we expanded our New York City Free Tax Prep Services, offering specialized support for freelancers, gig workers, small business owners, and other self-employed New Yorkers filing their taxes. NYC Free Tax Prep has saved clients a total of nearly $24 million in fees and helped secure $220 million in refunds for New Yorkers since the start of this administration. And finally, something that we are especially excited about is our Financial Empowerment Centers expansion that Mayor Adams announced at the State of the City. Under this expansion, we plan to add seven new financial empowerment centers for New Yorkers at New York City Health and Hospital locations. Individuals, families, and parents will be able to learn about these services while going for regular checkups or even in times of need. We believe these centers will have a major impact on our communities and will help these city's residents take on negative contributors to financial health, like concerns over medical debt that may keep New Yorkers from completing vaccines or attending follow-up appointments. This is just one of the many ways that our agencies and this administration continues to deliver for the working people of this great city. Coming from a household where my mother worked incredibly hard to raise myself and my sister, I realize how much my family and even myself would have benefited from financial education and counseling. I'm incredibly proud of the profound impact that our financial empowerment programs have had on New Yorkers and recognize the benefits that this has on their families and children. We look forward to continuing our impact and programming work, supporting New Yorkers in their efforts to improve their financial health. I hope this testimony has helped provide you with a snapshot of our past year and the great successes for DCWP and the people of this city as we continue to uplift New Yorkers. As we look forward to the upcoming fiscal year, I want to reaffirm my commitment on behalf of this agency to continue delivering on our essential work, providing core protections and rights to the residents of this city. Under Mayor Adams, our mission to protect and enhance the daily economic lives of New Yorkers remains steadfast. Before concluding, I would like to take the time to express my gratitude to all of you for your support in this work. Our agency and the New Yorkers in each of your districts are fortunate to have such ardent advocates representing them. And finally, I want to personally thank my DCWP family. I am so grateful to lead a team that works every day for the people of our city. Their committed and passionate efforts as public servants really do make it all come together for New Yorkers. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today, and I look forward to answering your questions.
Great. Thank you very much. Before I begin the questions, I want to say that we have been joined by my colleagues, Councilmember Abreu and Councilmember Brewer. So I'm going to start off with a number of questions. I have a lot of questions, and then I'm going to pause to see if my colleagues have any questions. Okay, so want to start with headcount and attrition. The preliminary plan includes a budgeted headcount of 447 in fiscal year 2025. However, from July 2023 to January 2024, DCWP lost 40 positions. It seems then that DCWP was then able to recoup and hire 50 positions. So while on the face value that appears as a net positive for an agency with a budgeted headcount of 447 and an actual headcount of 416, that's attrition of close to 40 staff in a six-month period. So that seems very high. So I want to better understand what is the reason for the attrition?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. Actually, when you track the attrition, as you just described, the number of lines that attracted from the agency tracks exactly the number of new needs we received when we took on the street vending enforcement work, which has since transferred over to the Department of Sanitation.
So that is a reason for the attrition. So people, you're saying that you've not had 40 staff members that have left for other reasons from the agency?
So, Councilmember, I understand the question to be asking for authorized headcount. You're asking for just general departures?
The point I'm trying to make is it seems that you've had a significant amount of staff in the last six months that have left the agency. We're trying to better understand how many staff members have left?
Thank you, Councilmember. I mean, we understand that the numbers, the way we understand them is that we actually have the highest headcount we've had ever in the agency, not losing that many that you were mentioning. There were lines that, because of the vending transition, were moved to sanitation, but our overall headcount is actually at an all-time high of 421 active, the authorized being 447.
So repeat that again. You're at 447?
447 is the authorized. Our active headcount is 421, which is actually the highest the agency has ever had.
So have any members? I'm sorry, I just can't hear. Thanks so much. Have any members left, any staff members left the agency in the past year?
Yes, members do leave. I mean, we do have vacancies throughout the years.
I just want to understand what that number is.
I know that, right, that's what I was going to say. Yes. Last year, we hired 77 and lost 25. But other than, you know, those are, I guess I just want to like, remember, right, remind you that there's a lot of fluidity in the number and the vacancies that we have and the backfilling of certain numbers. And then just specific to the ones you were mentioning, it seems like it's related to the transfer of vending to sanitation. Right.
Okay, got it. Thank you. That is helpful to clarify that. Consumer restitution, I want to get to this number because we went back and we looked at, so in fiscal year 2023, the consumer restitution, and I'm pulling this data from the MMR, just to be clear. Okay, fiscal year 2023, 1.25 million for consumer restitution. Fiscal year 2022, 1.69 million. So it's not like 2023 was an outlier, and we've got the data for every year. But if you go back, you look at 2015, fiscal year 2015, when I served as Commissioner, it was 6.18 million. Fiscal year 2016, 3.47 million. Fiscal year 2017, 2.29 million. Fiscal year 2018, 3.48 million. My point is, it seems that the consumer restitution is significantly lower than in prior years. What do you attribute that to?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. Chair Menon, I'm sorry. You know this agency better than anyone else. Like you say, you used to run it in, you know, back in 2015. We are actually very proud of the successes we had in even 2023, where we actually collected 14.5 million for New Yorkers in terms of workers and consumer protection, the work that we've been doing. So that's, we're going to continue doing that work. In terms of consumer protection, you're right, we collected the 2 million last year. Just this year, we've already started at 2 million also, and we've had some major wins as it relates to some of the categories where we get a lot of complaints, including secondhand automobile dealerships. We were able to resolve a case against a large dealership, 26 Motors, where we actually not only recovered the money for New Yorkers, but also were able to shut down that business for five years, including their principal, so that we are looking at not only the restitution that we have seen for New Yorkers, but stopping the deceptive business practices that we see, so it just doesn't happen again.
Okay, I guess my concern is that the one point, it's not 2 million, it's 1.25 million. So it's significantly lower than it's been in prior years, and one of the core missions of the agency, of course, is to return money to consumers that have been defrauded. I take your point that you're trying to crack down on the business fraud to begin with, but I'm going to get to this later. The numbers actually show that there have been fewer inspections than in prior years. So I guess I'm, my overall theme, just to be, to get it out on the table of my questioning, is that I feel that the agency is being asked to do many, many, many things with less resources. And so I am concerned when I see numbers like 1.25 million in consumer restitution or inspections going down. Those are concerning metrics. And so I want to understand, for example, how many staff members do you have right now who are focusing on mediating consumer complaints, who are focused on the core work of consumer restitution? What is that staff number now?
Yeah, thank you so much. And yes, our mandate has increased and really appreciate how much you care about our work. I'm actually going to ask the General Counsel, Mike Tiger, since he oversees also the mediation and consumer services, you need to tell you a little bit more about those specifics.
Yeah, and just first, thank you, Chair Menon. As the Commissioner alluded to, and just to clarify some of the numbers, just in this calendar year, so not reflected in the numbers you're seeing, just in 2024, we brought in $2 million in restitution. So this has already been a banner year, and we hope to continue that success buoyed by this very significant 26-motor settlement that brought in 1.5 million restitution for New Yorkers that we're distributing as we speak. We still have, as you might remember, a core consumer services unit that is dedicated to the intake and mediation of consumer complaint. I don't have the precise headcount in our consumer services unit right in front of me, but we can definitely get you that number. But we have, we still have teams of mediators, we have teams of intake staff dedicated to taking in and attempting to mediate consumer complaints, and we get hundreds of thousands of dollars in consumer mediation every year. I think just as a systemic issue that you were, I think, getting to a couple minutes ago, Chair Menon, it is true that when you were the, when you were the Commissioner and prior to 2016, DCA had its, as you know, had its own tribunal. Our adjudicatory function is now at oath, the Office of Administrative Trials and Hearing. That has caused organizational changes. As I think you know, we cannot, oath does not allow individual consumers to bring cases. That was possible at the DCA tribunal. So where an individual brought a case at the DCA tribunal and got restitutioned, now get credited to serve the DCA numbers, and that's no longer the case. So we're, but we are, I want to make it clear that we are very dedicated and are very thoughtful about with the resources we have, being very, allocating our resources to get money back in the hands of New York City consumers. And that's why I think it's important to underscore the successes we've already had this calendar year.
Okay, let's move on to the collection of fines, because the total amount of fines collected from settlements, pleadings, and consent agreements decreased by 59% between the first four months of fiscal 2023 and the first four months of fiscal 2024. The agency states this is due to operational challenges that arose from the agency's transition to its new business automation system. So how much in fines are still outstanding that have yet to be collected?
Just want to make sure I get the right number. This is it, right?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chair Menon. We actually, in 2023, collected over $15.5 million in fines and penalties combined for consumer and the worker protection, and that would make it a 25% increase from the previous year, mostly related to some of the work that, you know, I mentioned in my testimony, related to the tobacco and cigarette violations and the fines related to worker protection laws.
Yeah, but we're talking about the first four months of fiscal 2024, and we're not just talking about the worker protection. So I just want to make sure we're comparing apples to apples.
So again, I'm trying to understand how much in fines are still outstanding that
have not yet been collected.
Well, I think, to reiterate what the Commissioner was mentioning, in calendar year 23, we had fifteen point five million in fines collected. In calendar year 2022, we had about twelve, over twelve million. I think some of the issues that you reference arising from our transition to the new system is simply an updated, updates to, for example, New York City Open Data that have perhaps been impacting that period that you're referring to in the summertime. If you notice, for example, in Open Data, that from July, we haven't made updates to that dataset yet because of the transition, but in terms of our calendar year numbers, this has been fifteen point five million collected so far.
So what's, what are causing these operational challenges?
As you know, Chair, I believe you were the Commissioner when we transferred over to the Acela system, so you understand.
Yellow, I know that well. Unfortunately, too well.
A whole host of issues. Essentially, at the agency, you know, the Acela system was the brain, right? And then as the agency grew, we've built systems around that. We have since replaced that brain and have now gone through the challenges of connecting each other individual system to that one system to create one unified system. And it's been quite a transition process.
And when will that work be done?
Well, I would say, well, we will always look to improve the system, and that that work is never really finished, that we're always looking to add to the system, to make sure that we're serving New Yorkers best.
And what is the agency doing in the meantime, between issuing these fines and collecting them? Like, what is the plan given these operational challenges?
Talk about collection process. Sure, Chair. So as far, like, what my colleagues were referring to earlier is more of a data reporting issue, right? The collection process remains the same. We begin our collection efforts eighty-five days after an oath decision or ten days after a consent order has been signed with the respondent. And our collection efforts consist of sending emails, sending letters, collection letters, phone calls, and generally typically, those efforts wrap up within forty-five days after they begin.
Okay. Another area that I'm very concerned about are both licenses and inspections being down. So let's just get into that area. So for example, a drop in inspection. So the PMMR outlines that in the first four months of fiscal 2024, there was a fourteen percent decrease in the total number of inspections with tobacco retail dealer, electronic cigarette inspections decreasing by nineteen percent. And at the same time, we're seeing a twenty percent decrease in the number of tobacco summonses when compared to the same period in 2023. We all know, for example, nicotine is an enormous public health issue, so I want to understand, particularly with the notable rise in smoke shops in the city, which I know all of our districts are getting tremendous complaints about, you know, why are these numbers down?
Thank you for the question, Chair. We have some of the numbers that goes, go back to your original question with staff, with the transition of vending to sanitation, that impacts the number of inspections, but we're doing a lot of those as it related to street vending. As it relates to tobacco, we actually did forty-two thousand total last year, including fifteen thousand seven hundred for the tobacco and cigarette retail dealers. It is absolutely a hundred percent one of our priorities, right? It is, we know that it is an issue that is important to all New Yorkers. We have gotten creative and really strategized how to best use our resources to make sure that we're targeting those businesses, whether they're licensed or not, right? There's going to be a number of summonses that we're going to issue that have been issued for the ones that are licensed, and then we actually issued about seventy-six hundred violations for unlicensed activity related to these businesses. So we are prioritizing that work, getting out as much as possible, making sure that even using our powers to seal businesses that have a number of violations within adjudicated, right, by oath within a certain period of time, so that we can stay as much on top of it as the authorities that the law gives us, allows.
I guess if you could be more specific, I mean, why are these numbers down? Is it that you're down inspectors? Is it that you, I mean, I'm just trying to understand fundamentally why these numbers are down?
Yeah, we'll give you a little bit more information, and my team will be sure to chime in if I'm missing anything. But I know that some of the reporting on the PMMR, especially as it relates to tobacco, you, I don't know how much of this was when you were Commissioner of our agency, it's based on a grant that we get from the state, right, to enforce the tobacco laws, right? And those numbers are being focused on the individuals that are a hundred percent assigned to do that work. But because of the issue being such a problem, right, in our city right now, we have actually taken other inspectors that are doing other work and added that line of work as well, so that we can have a higher impact. And the work that those individuals are doing is not reflected in the PMMR, because those number, the number there is directly tied to the inspectors that are covered and paid for with the state grant. And, do you want to add anything?
Just to clarify one point the Commissioner made, the work of the inspectors we added to overall tobacco is reflected in the proactive number, which is why that has increased significantly. It's just that the tobacco program number captures the work of inspectors that are funded by the tobacco program.
And is the amount of the state funding, has that remained constant or has that decreased?
That has remained constant, Chair.
Got it, okay, that makes sense, okay. I'm going to pause, because I have so many questions, and I want to be respectful to my colleagues who are here. If they want it, Councilmember Breo, any questions?
Thank you, Chairman. And thank you, Commissioner, and thank you to the DCWP team. My question has to do with deliveryistas. We, first of all, I commend the work that the agency has done with establishing the minimum pay wage laws. I think that was very important. However, with the implementation of it, we'd love to know how that's going. I can tell you anecdotally, and what I'm hearing from deliveryistas directly, there are issues with tipping transparency, right? Deliveryistas, traditionally, before this bill passed, before the rulemaking went through, deliveryistas would get tipped at the cart versus after checkout. You know, now everyone, deliveryistas are losing a lot of, a lot of, a lot of resources as a result. The other stuff that we're hearing on the ground is, deliveryistas can't see their active time worked, for instance. They are, the apps aren't disclosing in advance the pay method that's being used, whether it's the fifty cents a minute or the seventeen and change per hour. Can you speak to these wide range of issues that have come as a result? And if you can be on the record, you know, speaking to those issues as well, that'd be great.
Thank you, Councilmember. I will start by going on the record to give you a shout-out, because you're my Councilmember, my district. So thank you for all the work that you do. It's very visible when I'm walking around my own neighborhood, so I really appreciate that. And thank you so much for the question as it relates to the deliveryistas and the minimum pay rate. It is a hundred percent one of the biggest things we've accomplished. It is obviously groundbreaking, we're taking initiative, right? We're leading the nation in this area, and we're very proud of the work. Took a lot of work, but we stayed the course. It didn't matter what was coming our way. I can share with you that since the, you know, from what we've been seeing, and we're obviously always continually monitoring these numbers, we know that apps are paying more than fifty million dollars more to workers per week, ever since the minimum pay rate went into effect. So fifteen million more per week, yes, in addition. The impact that obviously that has had, that has to be having in the lives of these essential workers, over sixty thousand are there, it's obviously very positive. In terms of what you've mentioned, yes, it is disappointing that the apps are not being transparent about the method that they're selecting, any particular pay period to comply with the minimum pay rate. It is also disappointing that they have moved the feature of the tipping to go after. Oftentimes, a consumer would just not even remember, you'll just not see it. So those are areas that we do think there is work to be done. We would love to consider and have the conversation about legislation to possibly correct those wrongs through that method, and we really look forward to having those conversations and seeing that's the best way to move forward, obviously listening from our deliveryistas as well, make sure that we approach it with them in mind.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Commissioner. Just wanted to make sure we give the opportunity to go on the record there, because it's an issue that we care about very deeply in my neck of the woods, and, you know, we want to make sure that we all get our food delivered to our houses, right? And, you know, we know deliveryistas do this, and under all types of circumstances and weather, and it's become a normal part of our gig economy, and we know that there's a lot more the city can do there. So I appreciate your contribution today.
Thank you. I also want to mention we've been joined by Councilmember Krishnan. Councilmember Brewer, do you have questions?
Well, first I want to say Carlos Diaz is a rock star. I'll make that, and I put him up on the stage and lights and everything. So just for the record to know, without all the specifics, we're trying to close one particular smoke shop. If it wasn't for him, it would still be open, and guess what? It's closed right now, again, because this particular smoke shop doesn't listen to anybody, they just do what they want to do, and they keep selling tobacco. So Mr. Diaz, you are a rock star. So let's, we'll keep working on it. Thank you very much. A couple of questions. Obviously, I very appreciate what you've been doing on Paid Sick Days, which is a bill that I passed many years ago, despite de Blasio taking credit for it. And my question is, it says here that the PMMR, that there have been an increase in workforce complaints compared to the same period in twenty-three, but the amount of investigations has gone down. I guess my question is, I know we have a bill pending to do more outreach and advertising, because I think people still don't know about probably not just Paid Sick Days, but other worker protection. So my question is, are you doing any outreach? Are there other ways that we can make sure people know about this? And again, sort of following on the Chair's questions, investigations are increased only a certain amount, but there's just an awful lot of complaints.
Thank you, thank you for that question, Councilmember. And yes, I agree, he is a rock star. I did promote him to his current role. We're pretty happy with him, and glad to hear that we are answering questions and serving New Yorkers the way we're supposed to. Pay, Save, and Sick Leave, the ten-year anniversary is actually coming up next month, so I think that's going to give us a great opportunity, with Chairman leading our committee, and also with you having sponsored this legislation that many years ago, to really increase the visibility and individuals to know more about it. We are continually doing work related to that, and I can tell you that in 2023, we did receive just under three hundred complaints related to Paid Safe and Sick Leave law, which is a little bit more than the year before. I can tell you that generally also related to oil worker complaints, the numbers have increased. Hard to tell specifically the reason behind it. Hopefully, some of it is because we're getting out there more, informing New Yorkers about their rights. I mean, it's disappointing that the same effect is not being, we're not having in businesses, but we'll continue to explore ways to do that and improve on that. And also, we've made some changes to our system in which now, I'm sorry, workers, well, any New Yorker, right, can file the complaints online a lot easier than perhaps people who are usually calling three-one-one, or where perhaps mailing something. So it's become a lot easier to file this complaint, so we think that there's a little bit of a relationship there. In terms of investigations, they all vary, it's hard to quantify and say which ones, you know, is more better, is less more, the investigation. I mean, some of the complaints that come are related to one business, and so we're going to group those together into one investigation, particularly when it relates to worker protection. We're going to be looking at, is it a workplace-wide issue that we need to be looking into, or is it an individual issue that we need to be looking into? When, as it relates also specifically to Fair Work Week, for example, we get many complaints about one particular business, and those will be together. But even within those, we may have individual complaints as it relates to also the job cost provision, right, where somebody is terminated unlawfully, and we're going to treat that individually as well, to make sure that especially if the individual wants to be reinstated, they can get their job back faster. I would love to have rock star Ortiz also share a little bit more about our outreach and how we're helping.
And is there backlog? That's the other question I have. Sure.
Well, just to speak directly to the outreach piece, Councilmember, we have been implementing outreach with respect to the local laws you helped us pass for greater awareness of Paid Safe and Sick Leave and the temporary schedule change. This includes a revamp and updating of our Worker Bill of Rights, that is a comprehensive guide for New York City workers about their city, state, and federal protections. We've already been putting that up on Lincoln YCs across the city. We are also engaging now with our partners in community-based organizations and labor organizations. I expect intense in-person outreach to begin in late April, early May. So I think along those lines, we're very excited to have the opportunity to speak more about worker rights in the city and get people to our doorstep to file those complaints.
The other quick question is education, not on the worker rights, but just on consumer. And then I'll stop, Madam Chair. The issue is, you know, the drugstore, the grocery store, et cetera. I do write letters when, you know, it's a complaint, but is there any proactive education, given the fact that you have less staff, et cetera? I do find that, you know, you know, the CVSs and so on are locking up the deodorant, I got all that. But, you know, I do worry that because you have less staff, that some of these stores, in the general sense, the watch store, the drugstore, the grocery store, et cetera, are they putting the prices out in the right manner, et cetera, et cetera? Are you finding any increase in that? Are you able to do education? Just give me an update on the consumer aspect of your agency as opposed to worker protection.
Let me start with, thank you, yes. So I think it's two pieces. There's a piece of, right, educating the New Yorkers, but then also getting out there to the businesses and make sure they know they have to comply and they know about watching.
Proactive as opposed to complaint-based, yes.
Correct. And so one of the things that we, I think we're getting better at is on those proactive inspections of regularly visiting these businesses, right, to make sure that they're complying with the law. We've gotten better at it because we also have a better system to route our inspectors, right, and maximize the time that they're out there and how many more businesses they can visit. I think that combined with our Business Education Days, right, that we've done hopefully in all of our, in all of your districts, and we should do them every year at least, if, you know, more than that, but let us know. We also had the business, the VIP that we just shared, that we expanded yesterday, right? The VIP, the Visiting Inspector Program. We used to only go to businesses that we licensed, we would proactively reach out to them and make sure that as soon as they got a license from us, we went out there and we're like, hey, this is the inspection checklist when our inspector comes in, this is what we're going to be looking at, let's walk through it, let's make sure you're good to go, so that next time we come, we're not issuing any summonses. So now what we, what we announced yesterday is that we're now moving to do that for any business in New York City, even if we don't license them. That's our way of, again, looking at, it's like, where we're at, what are we seeing? We want to make sure that we fill in any gaps to make sure that businesses, it's hard, it's hard to have a business in New York City, right? That they have also the support of an agency like ours, which sometimes people think that we're just going out there to enforce, but that, those are some of the ways that we are tackling, and obviously always, always open to any ideas, maybe something we haven't thought, would love to explore it and get out there more.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, and we've also been joined by Majority Leader Farias, and I'm now going to turn it over to Councilmember Krishnan for a question, and then I'm going to go back to some questions I have.
Thank you so much, Chairman. Good to see you, Commissioner. Thank you for your testimony, and I concur with Councilmember Brewer about Carlos's phenomenal work. As a constituent, too, I have to lift him up, and also, of course, longtime friend, Kenny Manaya as well, good to see you here. We come from legal services together, so very nice to see you. Commissioner, I just had, this is more just an exploratory question on two points. One, the Councilmember Brewer raised, which was just about the proliferation of illegal weed shops across our city. And it's, there's another one opening in my neighborhood on East Second Street and Thirty-seventh Avenue, and I'm just not, you know, there were, I'm not understanding the, how we can get better enforcement around it, because they seem to be popping up, then they'll close, then they'll open up again, undermining the state legal system. So I was just curious to know more about DCWP's role in that and how you all have thought about this issue.
I can help with the answer, too, if you want.
Thank you for that question, and I got to give my shout-out to my General Counsel, Mike Tiger, because nobody's giving him a shout-out. He is pretty good. He's a superstar also in our agency, and I tell people that I think I have a great General Counsel, because I go to him, and he is a great thinking partner, and figuring out, he's like, okay, maybe not that way, but this way. that way, but this way. Okay. To your, to answer your question, Councilmember, 100%. It is a huge issue. We recognize it. And what we've done is look at our toolbox and be like, what are our powers? What can we do within the powers that we have to tackle that issue? So as you know, we license tobacco retail dealers and e-cigarette retail dealers, right? And because of that, we inspect them. We're constantly inspecting them. We are very aware of just also the health dangers and with children and all that. I have two kids. One of them is 14, right? I mean, I'm always like paying attention to these things and it's important to me. So you kind of just bring this to the agency. So as of last year, starting last year, we started to pay a lot of, like focus a lot of our resources from our enforcement and our General Counsel's Office team there and together with the Law Department. The way it works for us, right, is that our inspectors are going to be going to any of the places that we know are licensed to make sure that they're complying with those laws, but also any complaints that we get from unlicensed businesses. If you don't know, it doesn't matter. Send them over. We'll go take a look. We'll route them over. We're going to go visit them. We'll issue those violations. We'll get them adjudicated at oath. Once we get the right number of those adjudications with my General Counsel, we'll soon share with you how many of those are within a certain period of time. We're going to go and we're going to tell that business, we're coming to seal you. We're coming to close you down. And we'll come back in about 10 days after and we will lock up that place. It's some, what we did with Councilmember Brewer, we just did that this morning also in Chairman Nen's district. And that's it. We'll close them down. We will then go again and make sure that you're still closed. Sure, if that business comes and says, you know what, I'm ready to pay my fines. I'm sorry, shouldn't have done that. And they agree to also not engage further in the illegal activity, we will reopen them, assuming they have a license, right? If they're unlicensed, that's it. They're going to stay closed. But assuming they have a license, but even if you tell me that, I am going to go again and make sure that you are actually holding up your part of the bargain, right? We have a great, we've been strengthening our relationship also with PD because they do come with us to make sure that there's no issues related to that. As of since last year, we've closed over 100 of these places. So what we're doing is that. We're just getting aggressive about it. We're like being very proactive about it. We'll continue to stay on it. It's a combination of our enforcement unit with our attorneys in Council's Office and the Law Department for any, you know, if we get challenged in any of our procedures. A lot from my General Counsel. Add anything else I might have missed or misspoke.
No, that really covered the waterfront. So I'm not going to gild the lily too much. But I think it does indicate, like, we recognize, we hear, you know, we have our ear to the ground as far as what's going on in New York. We hear it from you folks. We hear it from our Consumer Services Unit, from individual New Yorkers coming in. And so we, when we consider how we allocate our resources, we try to dedicate resource to what are the issues happening right now. And we have all seen it. You've seen it. We've seen it. The proliferation of smoke shops, as you mentioned, Councilmember. And so we very thoughtfully and intentionally thought like, how can we take our existing resources and target to what is going to have the greatest impact? And as the Commissioner said, over 100 since we've really increased our work in this space. So I think we are proud of how we're dedicating and we have one satisfied customer. We're willing to work, obviously with any of you and any of our staff to sort of intake complaints and sort of work to deal with this issue.
Thank you. We'll follow up more. Thank you though. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Thank you so much. Now, before we go back to the smoke shops and tobacco, I just want to pick up on one issue regarding worker complaints. Like, we talked a little bit about paid sick leave and I'm going to get back to that later. But under the MMR for fiscal year '23, it says that it's taking the agency 194 days to close these worker complaints. That, to me, is extremely high. And I want to compare it to, you know, you're on the one-year anniversary of Fair Work Week. When we were on the one-year anniversary of paid sick leave when I was Commissioner, it took us 33 days to close the paid sick leave cases. So 194 days is extremely alarming. Why is that number so high?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember. The way we look at it is, obviously, we're always going to try to get the money back to the workers, especially when it comes to worker protection. You'll see that we're always going to be prioritizing that restitution to the workers versus like penalties from the businesses. It really varies. The cases are vastly different depending on how many workers, how many violations of the law. As I think we've shared at least other times, somebody comes in with a complaint as it relates to Fair Work Week and we ask them about paid save and sick leave, right? It was like, is that also a violation? And make sure that, we don't have to go back to that business. We want to be very comprehensive. Stop the illegal activities. Stop the unlawful practices and make sure that we can make whole as many workers as possible. I can tell you though, that we do immediately, as soon as we receive a complaint, we do assign it to an investigator. And we really want to make sure that we've been thorough in those investigations. They vary in complexity. So there's going to be a range in terms of how long the cases take. I don't think I have it in front of me, but you know, for a worker, it's going to be one type of case. We have pay save and sick leave law. We have the word that we do with the Freelancers and Free Act work. All of those vary in complexity and in amount of time that it takes. But again, just last year, we did collect, you know, we did secure $12.5 million for workers and we intend to continue to work hard and make sure that workers, you know, their rights are upheld.
What strategies can you employ moving forward to bring down that timeframe of 194 days?
We're constantly looking at the ways in which we can improve our processes. We are, especially in the worker protection area, we have data scientists on our team that look at data in a way that makes it be faster. So that's one area in which we continue to evaluate and see if there are efficiencies we can pursue there. And I will just add also that in terms of the cases, when it relates to retaliation, for example, we do prioritize those and make sure that those are resolved quicker because we want to make sure that individuals get their jobs back if that's what they prefer.
And I think one thing I'd like to add too, in terms of the strategies that we're currently implementing, is to make sure that if we're seeing systemic violations of workers' rights, that we're taking a look at the whole workforce that's in that location. And so instead of doing necessarily a one, a one worker case, one complaint, one investigation, one worker impacted, the way we're able to secure this, these great successes in worker restitution is by looking at the entire workplace. That does take more time. We do, we do speak with, we do contact all the workers. We do speak with them. We develop that case and then we bring that, if we have to, we'll bring that case to oath if necessary. But I think it's a new strategy that brings us more successes.
So to that point, and you know, we've talked at length about this, Starbucks. Starbucks has a situation where there are 56 different stores, 76 different workers, some of whom have filed a complaint back in February 14th of last year, and none of those complaints have been closed. If ever there was a case that calls for a citywide investigation, in my opinion, it's Starbucks. So can you provide, why are we at this point where none of these cases have been closed?
Specifically to Starbucks, Chairman Nen, I can say it is a complex case. It is a very large case. As you mentioned, we do have dozens of complaints from workers that span over 50 stores. We want to get this right. I will also highlight that we did resolve four individual just cause cases that it's the same, that are part of the group of Starbucks workers because, like I mentioned before, we're going to prioritize those. There were two of them who did, won their jobs back. So we worked hard to make sure that those were prioritized. They still remain part of the larger case. The cases take time, especially depending on their size, when you start going through the process of looking at the complaints, engaging with the complainants, getting other information from them, reaching out to the business, getting their records, evaluating their records, issuing findings and then engaging in a conversation to resolve the matter. But we are confident that we are dedicating workers, employees in our units, in the worker protection unit to look at this case and make sure that we get it right.
Okay. I want to move back to tobacco as well as unlicensed smoke shops. But where I mentioned earlier that the numbers are down in terms of tobacco retailer dealers and e-cigarette inspections are down by 19%. But in terms of overall inspections, those, as I mentioned earlier, overall inspections by the agency are down 14%. So you mentioned earlier in your testimony that the agency is an all-time high in terms of headcount at 447. So if the agency is an all-time high, why are inspections down 14%?
Thank you, Chair. We've had incredible successes during the last two years since the Adams administration started and specifically last year, again, $14.5 million back to New Yorkers. We are constantly looking at the way we're operating, where we allocate resources, where we're looking at things, the impact that we're having. I don't think it is purely reflected in the number of inspections, but specifically as it relates to tobacco and e-cigarette retailers, we have done 15,700 related to our tobacco program, resulting in about 9,600 summonses and 7,600 of those in unlicensed activities for tobacco and e-cigarettes. Also collecting over $9.5 million in fines for businesses that are violating our tobacco and e-cigarette retail laws. So even, you know, the amount of people that we're reaching, not just in terms as reflected in the, what we've recovered for workers, for consumers and in fines, but the reach that we're having through our financial empowerment program with like 10,000 individuals being served by our financial empowerment centers, you know, getting through our partners, completing over 84,000 tax returns the last tax season. And that really is because of outreach that we've done and getting out there and educating New Yorkers and partnering with community-based organizations and other advocacy groups to make sure that they help us get the word out.
I would just, another, just a clarification. And I would say overall inspection numbers have gone down in the past calendar year is because of the vending transition. But again, I, in terms of our tobacco work, that inspection, that number of inspections has gone up in the past calendar year, especially if we look to the MMR and PMMR numbers. I guess the discrepancy there is that while the tobacco program numbers might be different, we have done much more proactive investigation, proactive inspections, I'm sorry, of tobacco. So if it's helpful, we can definitely, we can parse that out for you in a chart to like really clarify that. But I would say overall inspections are down because of vending and overall tobacco-related inspections are up.
So we're not seeing that. We're seeing a 20% decrease in the number of tobacco summonses when compared to the same period in 2023. So we definitely need to
Bring that to you.
dig into that because what, we're seeing something different than that and it's of great concern. I mean, I don't understand why the summonses are down 20%. And I would be concerned that businesses then, you know, you're going to have a huge black market for tobacco products sold in unlicensed shops. So I want to better understand that.
Well, Chair, we'll definitely follow up with the data. As my colleagues suggested, I just wanted to explain a quirk of how the data is captured. The PMMR refers to inspections conducted by inspectors in the tobacco program. The full number is captured, you have to add the number of the inspections in the tobacco program and a subset of the inspections in the proactive inspections. Because those inspections include inspections where an inspector went in to look for tobacco and other items that the agency enforces. So we'll parse that out for you, but that's how we keep referring back to the proactive number because that's where, that's going to capture some tobacco work as well.
And you'll, and you'll see a spike in the same PMMR chart in the proactive. But we will get you this data.
On smoke shop enforcement, what is the agency doing to lobby the state to push this bill that is at the state level forward that would give the city the legal authority we need to shut these unlicensed smoke shops down?
Thank you, Chair. I think we ourselves, PD, the Sheriff, have been in close collaboration over the past few years in terms of enforcement, but also in terms of advocacy. I know it is a mayor's, one of the mayor's priorities with respect to local cannabis enforcement authority. We're certainly supportive of that and are active partners.
Okay. That is top priority because, you know, we feel, all of us, I think, and I don't know a single Councilmember, doesn't feel strongly on this subject. So thank you. I want to switch back to the Office of Financial Empowerment because it is, as you said, an incredible resource to ensure that low-income New Yorkers are getting both EITC as well as financial empowerment services. So I want to understand that because it appears that there have been some cuts in that regard. So on financial tax prep, since it is tax season right now, one of the great programs that the agency offers is the Annual Tax Season Initiative. So an expansion for the program was added in an adoption. However, in the November plan, this expansion seems to be cut completely. Can you speak about that?
We didn't cut, thank you, Chair. We didn't cut any programs. I wonder if you're referring to, yeah, last year, we were going to be doing some work specific to a campaign. The, once the PEG came, that was part of what the agency, how the agency met its PEG. But the program itself did not get cut. There was no reduction in the amount of money allocated to the program itself. And, you know, we, you saw the numbers, right, increase in terms also of the tax returns that were completed last year.
So there, so to be clear, I just want to get this on the record. So there's absolutely no cuts on financial tax prep. And what about in terms of work done to make sure that New Yorkers are availing themselves of the earned income tax credit?
100% no cuts there either. I mean, the, as you know, right, I mean, you obviously been a huge advocate of this and the mayor also believed in it. And since he came in, that's how we saw the result last year of his advocacy during the first year in terms of expanding the city's contribution ability, you know, like being allowed by the state to contribute more than the 5% that the city used to contribute. So we're like at the 10 to 30%. And we're seeing a huge impact on New Yorkers getting out there. I mean, I've done so many presentations. I really enjoy it because I get upset when people tell me that they've paid for tax prep when we know that the program, it's so good. It's free. It's professional. It's in the language that people understand, over 140 locations across the city. So I mean, I've been doing a lot of presentations myself on Facebook, like even in Spanish. So it's definitely a priority for us and no slowing down in promoting the program and its impact as it helps individuals that qualify for the earned income tax credit.
Okay.
In terms of, I just wanted to add, in terms of outreach, since the beginning of the Adams administration, we've done over 400 free tax prep events. To spread the word, you might have seen some of our high-visibility street furniture and marketing campaign placements going up just recently. And on the advocacy level, we continue to work closely with the mayor's office and at the state with respect to certain earned income tax credit expansions.
Okay. We've also been joined by Councilmember Ose. So speaking about the earned income tax credit, so in 2015, we launched the city's largest phone-a-thon. We did a phone-a-thon in every single borough in multiple languages. We worked with other city agencies to get data on who is eligible for EITC. And then we did phone banking to them in dozens and dozens of languages. And as a result of that, we were able to return $250 million to low-income New Yorkers. So I want to know if the agency is going to consider something like that again? Because we were able to get the $250 million back. You mentioned a number of $220 million, which covers two years. So it's less, you know, significantly less than we got in 2015. So I'm not trying to always go back and compare, but this was something that really worked. We reached, because people were leaving the EITC on the table and not taking it. Is the agency contemplating doing something outside of the box like that that really, you know, we proved that it worked and it's all there to be done again? I mean, the whole thing is there to be able to utilize?
Love thinking outside the box. Let's definitely talk and figure out how do we can get to reach more New Yorkers. 100% on board with exploring any way to reach more New Yorkers.
Okay. I'm going to ask if any of my colleagues at this point, no? Councilmember Ose, do you have any questions? Okay. I'm going to keep on going then. All right. So I want to talk now about miscellaneous revenue changes. So in the fiscal 2025 prelim budget, DCWP saw projected changes particularly in consumer protection licenses, consumer protection fines in the state tobacco program. So the fiscal 2025 prelim plan projects that the department will collect $5.6 million in revenue from consumer protection licenses in fiscal 2024, which is less than the actual amount collected in fiscal 2023 and 1.2 million less than in revenue from licenses in fiscal 2025. Is a projected decrease in revenue in fiscal '24 a result of an increase in issuing licenses?
Thank you for the question, Chair. No, that, and I think that's reflected in the PMMR as far as licensing wait times. This is, this fluctuation is more operational. As you know, our licenses expire every two years. So So on some years, I think it's the odd years, we have the higher volume categories, home improvement contractors, and then on the even year, the number decreases slightly.
And has, in terms of the number of business licenses, can you talk about the overall number of business licenses that were issued?
I believe we have about forty thousand licensees, businesses that have DCWP licenses, Chair.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Forty thousand is the number of licensees with DCWP licenses.
And how is that comparing to the last couple of years?
Well, I think
I remember when I joined in 2016 that we had about more than seventy thousand licensees and now we're about forty, forty-five thousand. I think we've overall, in the past few years, engaged in a very intentional process of small business relief and reform, both on fines, both on fees, but also in terms of maybe anachronistic or outdated licensed categories that were unnecessary. So for example, a big chunk of what was changed between 2016 and now was the repeal of the home improvement salesperson category and kind of folding those requirements into the home improvement contractor category. I think that was able to achieve one license for that activity, as well as, you know, remembering that we always have the consumer protection laws as another authority we can leverage.
I do have a question related actually to the Home Improvement Trust Fund because we are receiving a number of complaints about that. I want, because I know obviously the agency made changes to that about the way that that works. So how many consumers have received the up to ten thousand dollar limited Home Improvement Trust Fund invasion since your new rule went into effect?
Sorry, we'll have to get you that exact number. It's been close to a million dollars we've distributed through trust fund invasions. Yeah, it's a hun, it's a little over one hundred consumers that have, we've been able to provide that up to ten thousand dollar number since we streamlined the home improvement contractor
And how does that compare to prior years before you implemented the new rule change?
I mean, I don't have the, those exact numbers, we can get those to you. It is a significant change. I mean, it was a priority for us to figure out how best to make sure that the trust fund could be invaded more expeditiously and get money into consumers' hands. So we were reacting to something that we were seeing on the ground. And so we decided we had to make an operational change. We engaged the law department, we actually had to go through a rulemaking process to achieve this goal. But it has had a very beneficial effect on New Yorkers just in the last six months.
Okay, going back
Chair Menon, I'm sorry, just to jump in. Since 2016, we've had a hundred and sixty-seven invasions of the trust fund for about two million dollars. So I would say that the reforms that we made most recently have made up a significant chunk of that. So I think they've really gone to benefit New Yorkers in many ways.
Okay. So in terms of, so we're seeing that, as you mentioned, a real drop in the number of licenses. And you explained why some of the categories are no longer licensing and there's been a streamlining of the licenses. We're seeing a drop-off in consumer protection fines when compared to last year's preliminary plan. Can you explain the reason for the reduction in fine collections?
Thank you for the question, Chair. So what's in the preliminary report as far as that drop you're referring to? Fiscal year '24 preliminary, the revenue target there was twelve million. Fiscal '25 preliminary, the revenue target there is nine point seven million. That twelve million dollar figure reflects a one-time pegging of revenue, right? There's a, there's a PEG instituted by OMB. We met the PEG because we had higher than expected revenues and that's why that number increased one time. The baseline is the nine point seven million dollar figure, which we're back to this fiscal year.
Okay, I want to move to the Office of Labor Policy Standards. Obviously, that office is promoting equity in the workplace by enforcing New York City's worker protection laws. So everything from, as we discussed, paid sick leave and Fair Work Week and other important laws related to that. You recently implemented an online portal to increase visibility and accessibility for workers to file formal complaints. So in the first four months of fiscal 2024, the agency saw a one hundred and eighty percent increase in workforce complaints when compared to the same period of fiscal 2023. However, the agency only increased the amount of investigations by ninety-five percent. So what is driving this large increase in workforce complaints? And can you furthermore explain the disparity between the two PMMR indicators?
Thank you, Chair Menon. The number of complaints coming in, it's difficult to pinpoint exactly what's causing them. I mean, some of the, what we shared before, I think, still applies in terms of accessibility and, you know, easiness to file the complaints because of our online portal. Getting out there more in terms of sharing and giving presentations, strengthening our relationships with worker advocacy groups, also that help us make sure that more working New Yorkers know of their rights. As in, in terms of the investigations open, I think it's a little bit hard to relate the two because not every complaint is going to end up being an investigation, right? And also not every complaint is going to result in an individual investigation as many of them could be grouped together because it relates to the same business.
So what will that mean moving forward? How, how do you expect that this disparity will be resolved?
Well, it's just that I don't think they're, I don't think they're necessarily, I don't think they're ever going to be necessarily related because I would have to see if the specific number, the complaints that are coming in, they're just not necessarily going to end up all being investigations or all being individual investigations. In terms of improving, you know, the work that we do, that, you know, it's just an exercise that we engage in constantly throughout the year and not just, you know, for budget reasons, but just generally making sure that what we're doing is what makes the most sense to have the biggest impact, positive impact on New Yorkers and in the fastest way. So those exercises will continue. Again, you know, for example, in terms of reaching more New Yorkers, having put in out that portal has really helped and gives visibility. As we get more complaints, you know, we can identify, say, is there any particular area, right, that we might want to focus on and that we might be seeing that needs special attention? We'll focus on that as well.
And how do you plan on handling the increase in complaints? And so, for example, the increase in caseload has led to an increase in time to open an investigation by twelve percent. Do you have plans to increase your workforce in these areas to address this?
We'll have to take a look. I mean, again, depending in the type of investigation that it is, is there any particular area that we want to focus on? Moving around like resources to prioritize, be strategic about it? There'll be a number of things that we'll be looking at to make sure that we get back to New Yorkers as soon as possible.
And in terms of, and we talked a little bit about Starbucks. Are there other companies in that same, not the exact same fact pattern, of course, but are there other large companies that have systemic complaints across the board? I know you can never talk about an open, active investigation, I'm not asking for that. I'm just asking for, are there other comparable corporate actors who have tremendous number of complaints that you are looking at?
Well, I mean, I think one thing that we got to talk about when I first started also was Chipotle, right? That was one company that we had that groundbreaking settlement of twenty million for workers. And that was one example that I think brought a lot of visibility to the Fair Work Week law. We have completed investigations against other businesses. Paris Baguette was one of them that we also settled recently last year. And there were a few others that we put out some press releases to promote the work and let individuals know that we are here for them and also show businesses that we are paying attention to them. Just last year, specific to Fair Work Week, we had a million dollars in restitution and eight hundred thousand in civil penalties for about seven thousand workers. You know, the same way we try to get out there and inform businesses also, we hope we've hosted roundtables with these large companies to make sure that we're all on the same page and we can really go over any questions that they may have to try to move them into compliance. That's always also going to be our goal.
Okay, question on street vending because you talked earlier about the transfer of the street vending enforcement to the Department of Sanitation. Are you still currently working with sanitation and assisting them in this transition? And if so, how?
We will, yes, we are helping them, you know, with the knowledge that we acquired during the time that we were enforcing it. So we remain a resource for them, we're not actively doing any enforcement, but we do remain as a resource for them.
And is there anything still budgeted within your agency budget for street vending enforcement?
No.
Okay, okay. Going back to the Home Improvement Contractor Trust Fund, which I talked about before. So can you talk a little bit about what the review process? You mentioned that a hundred consumers have been helped. That seems on the low end because I know, you know, from my prior days at Consumer Affairs that the home improvement complaints are one of the top consumer complaints. So a hundred seems low. What is the review process and how can we get that number increased in terms of the number of consumers that are reached?
It's a relatively new process, right? Since we try to improve the system to make sure that we were more positively impacting more New Yorkers. So I think we're still seeing that and hoping that that number keeps going up. But I'll have General Counsel Mike Tiger tell you a little bit more about those steps that we follow.
Yeah, I mean, first, I want to say, first, this is a relatively new process, as the commissioner said. So we're actually, you know, quite happy with the way that it started. Second, of course, we always want to work with all of you. And anything that, you know, we can do and work with you to get the word out. There is a page on our website that walks consumers through the revamped HIC Trust Fund Invasion process. We hope, is pretty self-explanatory. But we've actually gotten, we were actually pleased with the number of applicants for a trust fund invasion that we've got. We actually have an attorney dedicated, well, not all his time, but we have an attorney who's like working with staff to go through the claims process and make sure that the paperwork all makes sense and that the timing works out and that the actual licensee in place what contributed to the trust fund. So we're actually relatively optimistic with how things are going so far. And we are optimistic that with continued engagement, those numbers will continue to give, allow us to put money back in the pockets of New Yorkers.
Okay, I want to talk a little bit about some of the larger-scale consumer protection investigations because for-profit colleges, for example. So during my tenure, we issued the subpoenas to four different schools. I know you recently announced on Berkeley, right? What happened to the other three schools that we had sent subpoenas to?
I, thank you, thank you, absolutely. For-profit colleges is an issue. You mentioned Berkeley, we also actually pursue a case against ASA College and they're no longer accredited, so they're like out of business. But it is something that we're paying attention. I don't know if we have on that time.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is going back, I mean, going back a while. I mean, I think we can sort of maybe talk to you more offline about those individual investigations. I know when I started in 2017, I know that a couple of years before, we had issued some of this. I know the cases you're talking about, but I don't want to
But, fine, terrific, we will definitely handle that offline, not a problem. Going back to OFE, skipping around a little bit, unbanked and underbanked New Yorkers. So you recently released a brief detailing the number of unbanked households in New York City, which estimated that nearly ten percent of New York City's households are unbanked, which is more than double the national average. That's terrible. And most striking was a study found that seventy percent, seventeen percent of Bronx households were unbanked. So does the preliminary plan include any additional resources to address the high levels of unbanked households across the city?
Thank you for that question, Chair, and thank you for being so aware of our work because there's so much that goes into it and we're glad to see it noted. We work through our financial empowerment centers, right? One of the things that we try to make sure that New Yorkers know to do is to have safe banking. There is individuals who have banking, but then there's those, like you mentioned, right, like that we highlight in the report, who do not have a bank account. And that's one of the goals that we try to have New Yorkers reach when they meet with our financial empowerment counselors because some of them, we know anecdotally, right, that they believe that they just cannot access a bank account, that they cannot meet a certain minimum for them to maintain a bank account. We know that sometimes also the issue may be that they don't know that there are certain banks that will accept the NYCID, for example, to do that. So part of what we do is to make sure that they have that information, empower them with that information so they can move forward. Certainly, some of the reasons that, as you might have read in the report, is because there might be a lack of brick and mortar branches in some of this neighborhood. Welcome, a meeting to really figure out ways in which we can tackle the issue. I don't think it's necessarily just us, but other partners in government and outside of government to try to make sure that there's more accessible banking in New York City, especially the neighborhoods that we mentioned in the report.
I would also add, Chair Menon, that Mayor Adams also announced an expansion of the financial empowerment centers in the state of the city. That's, we're looking at seven new financial empowerment centers at H&amp;H locations, which, to the commissioner's point earlier, we think will be able to connect, serve as hubs and connect New Yorkers with a lot of different resources. We're still working with OMB in terms of the implementation of that, but it's something we're definitely excited for.
Okay, terrific. On that note, I am going to stop questioning because we've got many members from the public who are here. So I want to thank the administration for being here today and answering our questions. We'll continue the dialogue, as I know we've got some follow-up. But thank you very much for your testimony today.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, I'll turn it over to committee counsel, thank you.
We give the administration an opportunity to collect their things and turn to public testimony. I now open the hearing for public testimony. I remind members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the sergeant-at-arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card with the sergeant-at-arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have two minutes to speak at today's hearing, which is topics preliminary budget hearing, consumer and worker protection. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the sergeant-at-arms. You may also email written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov within seventy-two hours of this hearing. Audio and video recordings will not be accepted. The first panel will be in person, Rafael Espinal, Josh Kellerman, Michael Cassidy, and Ligia Walpa. You may come to the table. You may begin.
Let me put my timer here. Well, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Ligia Walpa. I'm the executive director of a workers' justice project, which is a worker center that has been organizing low-wage workers for almost a decade, particularly essential workers like construction workers, cleaners, and app delivery workers. In the past year, in the past three years, we've been advocating to pass labor protections for app delivery workers. And we passed a few of them from access to bathroom, ability for workers to decide how far they want to travel. And the most recent one is the minimum pay standard. And first, I want to acknowledge the ongoing efforts of the commissioner and DCWP on the actually, on the historic implementation of minimum pay. And I just want to highlight some important facts. One is app delivery industry happens to be one of the growing industries in New York City. And some of the huge significant impacts that we have seen, and I think the commissioner Mayuga had explained, is that in the past four, in the past, in the first two months of minimum pay implementation, there has the past, in the first two months of minimum pay implementation, there has been 16 millions of pay increase just on minimum, on minimum pay, every week. That's how much of money, extra money that is going in the pockets of delivery workers. However, what some of the biggest challenges we have seen is the ongoing retaliation of workers, from the, from ongoing retaliation from the companies to the workers. And some of these happens to be removing the tipping option and making it harder and reducing the tipping amount that deliveristas are receiving. The other one is reducing flexibility, making it harder for workers to join the apps. The other one is creating confusion, division, and anxiety by making sure that pay transparency becomes almost impossible for workers to understand how they're paid. And today, you will hear from some of that frustration and that division that has been created by the apps. And we're here to continue to advocate, to make sure that we hold the app companies accountable for better pay and better standards, and also close the gaps when it comes to the pay transparency, and make sure that workers continue to receive the tips, which is a right that workers deserve and companies should be limiting, and we should be, continue to hold accountable the corporations. And we look forward to working with City Council on passing more legislation that holds not only app deliveries accountable, but also makes the streets safer.
I'm just going to ask you to wrap up, and if you want to submit, you're going to submit the written testimony?
Yeah, yeah, and I'm actually wrapping it up. Yeah.
Terrific.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Michael Cassidy. I'm an organizer at 32BJ SEIU. I'm here to testify in support of the critical role the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection plays in supporting labor standards in the fast food industry and other industries in New York City. Unfortunately, in the January 2024 PEG, DCWP was given a hiring freeze that will mean they can't backfill vacant positions to get their important work accomplished. We urge the city to reverse the PEG and allow DCWP to restore their staffing levels. Employment in the fast food sector has grown rapidly over the past two decades. This has been especially true in New York City, whose growth in fast food employment outpaced the national rate between 20, or between 2000 and 2014. While employment in the sector fell during the pandemic, it has again been climbing as the city's economy and employment recover. Recent data from the Center for an Urban Futures State of the Change Report shows that fast food employment in New York City returned to pre-pandemic levels in 2022. The city has taken seriously the need for greater protections for fast food workers by passing legislation like the Fair Work Week law, paid sick and safe leave, freelance protections, and $15 minimum wage. More recently, the council passed groundbreaking just cause legislation, making New York the first city in the country to protect fast food workers against unfair firings and reductions in hours, as well as protections for delivery workers. DCWP has been an unflinching champion of these standards, and 32BJ has been proud to work with this agency to enforce the rights of thousands of New York, New Yorkers subjected to unjust work conditions. At the union, we see the impact of DCWP's advocacy every day. In 2022, DCWP supported Chipotle workers in winning a $20, or a $20 million settlement after filing complaints alleging thousands of violations to their predictable scheduling. Right. We've seen similar victories in other industries in which we organize. In two recent settlements with major airline contractors concerning the city's paid sick and safe leave law, DCWP was able to recover $30,000 for the city and an additional $138,000 for hundreds of workers. Over the last year, 83 Starbucks workers from 63 stores filed complaints with DCWP alleging systematic violations of the Fair Work Week and Just Cause Law. Starbucks operates three times as many restaurants in New York.
I'm just going to ask if you can start to wrap it up, and then I know you're going to submit the written testimony.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Just to conclude, in passing just cause amidst the pandemic, New York City sent a bold message that we will rebuild our economy by protecting essential workers, not by sacrificing them. We ask that the City Council stand by its commitment by funding DCWP so it can make these laws a reality for all fast food workers. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Josh Kellerman. I'm the Director of Public Policy at the Retail Wholesale and Department Store Union, RWDSU. We represent around 40,000 workers in New York, from apparel retail, grocery stores, pharmacies, food processors, warehousing, cannabis, farm workers, nonprofits, and other low-wage sectors. I would first like to take a moment to appreciate the leadership of the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection for supporting workers' rights and working people throughout the city. At several moments of crisis for our members, the members of this committee have stood side by side with us to demand dignity, equality, and fairness on the job. It is important for workers who are being attacked by their employers to see that the elected leaders of the city have their back. Thank you. Second, I would like to appreciate the dedicated leadership and staff at the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection. DCWP is the enforcement arm of several bills that we have championed in New York City, including paid, safe, and sick leave, the Fair Work Week law, the Grocery Worker Retention Act, and the prohibition on cashless businesses, and more. DCWP is essential to protecting workers and consumers in New York City and deserves not just praise, but the resources necessary to do their job well. The RWDSU is concerned about the preliminary budget proposal and its potential impact on DCWP's ability to enforce New York City's labor laws. The enforcement of paid, sick leave, and fair work week should not be cut to save money, as ultimately, the failure to enforce these laws will lead to more lost wages for workers, more sickness in our population, and more economic disruption for those who can, who can afford it the least. These will cost the city more in the long run than any budget cuts will save. The essential role of DCWP to New York City's workers and consumers means that the department should not be subject to this planned attrition and hiring freeze. Please ensure that DCWP is fully funded to do its essential work. On behalf of RWDSU's membership and leadership, I'd like to thank you again for your leadership and support.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairperson Menon and fellow council members. My name is Rafael Espinal, a former New York City Council member, and now proudly the Executive Director of the Freelancers Union. The Freelancers Union is the country's largest and fastest-growing independent workers organization, representing over 90,000 freelancers just here in New York City alone. Our members work in a diverse number of essential fields, making their living as service providers, accountants, healthcare workers, media workers, and artists. In 2022, we continue a longstanding partnership with the Mayor's Office of Media Entertainment to unveil our New York City's Freelancers Hub in Industry City, Brooklyn, where we are thrilled to, to provide a free coworking space and programming for freelancers across all five boroughs. The independent workforce offers valuable skills, efficiency, and on-demand labor to large and small businesses. They truly are the backbone of this city's economy. Freelancers Union has fought for and won protections for freelance workers, including the nation's first Freelance Is In Free Act to protect folks from non-payment right here in New York City, and of course, with your help, Chairperson Menon, when you were the Commissioner there at the agency. We are immensely proud of the Freelances in Free Law, which is, which in over five years has resulted in at least 773 freelancers reporting to receive payment that was owed to them after filing a complaint with DCWP, totaling approximately $3 million in restitution to those workers. DCWP conducted more than 230 events that raised awareness about the Freelances in Free Act protections during this period, reaching approximately 20,000 folks. This is why I encourage the council to adequately support DCWP, who enforces Freelances in Free by ensuring they have the proper staffing and funding for their casework outreach and education. Additionally, alongside the, the Mayor's Office and the, the Mayor's Office of Department of Consumer and Worker Protections, we are now able to provide freelancers across the city with free support when they file their taxes and assist with other financial planning needs through the Self-Employed Tax Program, which has been incredibly impactful for freelancers across the five boroughs. With that said, we, we ask the councils to continue supporting the Commissioner, the agency. They're doing very important work in ensuring that the independent workforce, which doesn't have the basic protections as traditional employees, are, are protected and have the resources they need to succeed in all five boroughs. Thank you.
I really want to thank the four of you for being here today because this testimony is incredibly important. I don't know if you were in the room for my questioning, but one area of my questioning centered around the fact that it's taking the agency, on average, according to the MMR, 194 days to close out worker complaints, which in my opinion is far, far, far too long. So having this testimony is very important. I wanted to ask, and it's open to any of you that want to answer this, is this 194-day average time to close a complaint, how in your opinion is that affecting your members?
I mean, I'll speak directly just to our members' experiences when they reach out to the, to the agency. And of course, this is not at all the fault of the agency, but the lack of funding they just didn't have to staff people and to take on these complaints. The first email they receive when they file a complaint for, for non-payment from a client, I think outlines, outlines that they're going to have to wait over three weeks to receive an initial response, right? And that is because they are severely understaffed. So we encourage the mayor's, the mayor, the mayor's office and, and the City Council to ensure that the Commissioner has the resources she needs to be able to, to complete and act on those cases as soon as possible.
I just wanted to add, actually, passing the minimum wage laws for delivery workers, that adds a huge number of new complaints that was unpredicted, especially in enforcing a large workforce. So the fact that they're going through hiring freeze means unable to add more investigators, being able to take on the large amount of load cases. And we're expecting more as app delivery companies continue to retaliate and create a low, a huge load of casework that I think we need to make sure that a fully funded staff agency can respond to a rapid growth of violations that are experiencing, not only delivery workers, but many of these new industries that are being regulated.
You know, I think I would add, in the, the numbers that, that we've seen, you know, it takes 10 to 12 weeks just to get like assigned for an investigation. And, you know, working in the fast food industry as we have, and, you know, some of the city's lowest-paid workers, you know, just these, these workers can't afford, if they've been unjustly terminated, if their hours have been cut significantly, they just can't afford to be, you know, to wait that long.
Yeah, you know, they've, they've had a significant increase in responsibilities over time. And we just keep adding new bills that we want them to enforce, right? And without the appropriate level of resourcing, I think it's only expected that the timelines are going to increase. We'd love to see shorter timelines, but they'd have to go hand in hand with additional resources.
Yeah, and just to finish adding on the thought about how it affects our members, I think there, our members become discouraged, and they most likely decide not to go through the process because of the long wait times, which leaves them in this position where they're most likely going to get exploited.
Right. So it has a deterrent effect on people even wanting to file a complaint if they feel that they're not being heard. Couldn't agree more. So thank you so much for your testimony today. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next panel will be Bishop Mitchell Taylor, Karina Kaufman-Gutierrez, and Ben Fuller Gugans. You may come up to the table. You may begin.
Good afternoon, Chair Menon, to Councilmember Ferraris, to Councilmember Brewer, and to all the committee members and staff on today. I am Bishop Mitchell Taylor, the co-founder and CEO of Urban Uptown, nonprofit organization that was developed 20 years ago to break cycles of poverty in public housing neighborhoods in New York City. I'm testifying to highlight the importance of retaining city-funded programs that protect lower and middle-income New Yorkers, both as workers and consumers in New York City. For instance, Urban Uptown operates two programs in partnership with DCWP that achieves this goal. First of all, let me describe the composition of Urban Uptown, which is made of seven silos in communities made up of business development, career development, one-on-one financial counseling that we innovated in New York City for poor people in public housing, youth development, academic and vocational, the Urban Uptown Federal Credit Union, the Urban Uptown Tax Preparation Services, which is the largest tax preparation service in New York State, and fourth in the country, and then the Urban Uptown Mental Health Department. And none of these would be novel if they stood individually, but when you comprehensively integrate them on campuses, it becomes magical. We have seven brick-and-mortar facilities that operate in New York City with 36 satellites, preparing taxes for New Yorkers in all five boroughs. Last year, we did 14,000 returns, returning $12 million to New Yorkers in this city. The second program, which is made possible through funding from DCWP, is our financial counseling program. Financial counseling was something that was not funded in New York City 20 years ago. And when I started talking about low-income New Yorkers needing one-on-one financial counseling, nobody wanted to fund it. But I found a quote from Bill Clinton that said, "Rich people have financial planners, but poor people actually need them." And finally, I struck an arrangement with Jonathan Mintz, who was the former Commissioner with the Department of Consumer Affairs at that time, and we inaugurated one-on-one financial counseling at Urban Uptown, and then expanded it and created the Office of Financial Empowerment under DCA. So I, I have a testimony written that I'll submit, but I think that is very important to highlight how important these partnerships are with urban, community-based organizations like Urban Uptown that provide these invaluable services to not only small businesses, but gig workers and residents of New York State that need tax preparation. So thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak on today. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairmenon and committee members. My name is Karina Kaufman-Gutierrez, and I'm the Deputy Director of the Street Vendor Project. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify today. As the only organization that exclusively serves street vendors in New York City, we are the centralized hub for this underserved population with a membership of over 3,000 street vendors. We respectfully request support from New York City Council to sustain and expand two of our programs, Central Small Business Empowerment Program and the Community Outreach for Street Vendors. The demand for street vendor education and services continues to grow as the population has transformed during the pandemic and continues to increase as many asylum seekers are now beginning to vend. It's critical, truly, that there is an investment in education and training for these emerging small business owners to help them know their rights and responsibilities, which SVP is primed to do. We're the one-stop shop for street vendors that provides them not only with legal representation when they receive a ticket, but help them to navigate complex street vending laws in seven different languages: Arabic, Bangla, Spanish, Mandarin, English, French, and Wolof. We also offer trainings to build their skills to grow their businesses. Despite being a small team of three full-time organizers, two part-time, and one lawyer on staff, in just the first eight months of this fiscal year, we've supported 414 individual vendors with consultations on topics from sales tax filings to loan applications to negotiating catering contracts. We've also reached over 700 individual vendors through street outreach and resource fares to connect them to services and hold monthly workshops at our membership meetings with an attendance of between 50 to 75 individuals. Each of these engagements is with the purpose of helping a small business owner to grow and to become part of the formalized economy. There is, and, you know, we truly do fulfill a critical role because there is no city agency that meaningfully serves street vendors. DCWP previously conducted street vendor outreach and education. However, when the transition to the Department of Sanitation took place, the responsibility was not transferred to another agency, leaving a significant gap in services that is a disservice to New Yorkers. Thank you so much for the time and I appreciate your support for the Street Vendor Project.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chairmenon, Chairmenon, and council members of the Committee for Consumer and Worker Protection. My name is Ben Flugans. I'm the Deputy Director with the Carroll Gardens Association. We are a member of the New York City Coalition for Domestic Work, which includes other organizations like the National Domestic Workers Alliance, New York Chapter, La Colmena, Hand in Hand, Adicar, and Damayan. So you'll be hearing shortly from some of our domestic worker members, but I really want to emphasize, you know, domestic workers, there are 800,000, 200,000 in the, in New York City. Nannies, house cleaners, home care attendants are the ones that, you know, take care of our children, our homes, our loved ones. And despite this essential work that they do, they often are excluded from many protections that other workers face. They are often susceptible to wage theft, not getting contracts, paid sick time, and a host of other areas. This is largely due because of the unique nature of domestic work, right? They are working in private households, not regulated by the government, often in the, in the shadows. And Coalition And coalitions like us and the Department of Consumer Worker Protection are really uniquely situated to do outreach and education and distribute resources to this community. We have domestic worker members who do outreach. We do joint outreach with the Department of Consumer Worker Protection. Our coalition represents over six languages that really is able to access and communicate with this diverse workforce. So I'm here today as part of, as the New York City Coalition to, one, really urge you all to not to remove the hiring freeze from DCWP. They do such incredible and critical work to provide resources and support to domestic workers. And really, without them on the city level, there wouldn't be other places for domestic workers to turn. In addition, we just want to urge you to also support the Domestic Worker Employer Empowerment Initiative. This is a $700,000 fiscal year 25 initiative.
I'm just going to ask you to wrap up, please.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much to the panel. I did have a question for Bishop Taylor. In terms of the tax preparation work around free tax prep, EITC, what are you seeing in the field? What type of work is Urban Upbound doing with DCWP?
Yeah, so we run the largest tax preparation program in the state and in the city of New York. We've seen exponential increase in services centered around ITINs because of the new arrivals that have come, especially those that meet that 90-day threshold, along with those that want, that are working with ITINs, that have already received them, that are getting their tax. So the amount of taxes that we're doing now, you know, for local New Yorkers and new arrivals have increased exponentially. It's every site that we have is busy. There's not one site that you can walk into and just, you know, it's just, I've never seen it this busy before. And so the work that we're doing in partnership with DCWP, with the IRS, with the City of New York, helping low-income New Yorkers, especially those that have businesses earning $250,000 a year and less, they can get their taxes done in any Urban Upbound site. And we're the only one in the United States of America that can do these complicated business taxes for small businesses, and we do it for free.
Okay. I'm sorry, hold on one second. Yeah, one question that we have is, according to some of the data, it's showing a cut in terms of what DCWP is allocating for tax prep services. If you're seeing that it is so busy in all of the locations that you're offering this service in, how are these cuts impacting the work that you're doing?
Well, you know, Commissioner, I'm glad you asked that. Councilmember, glad you asked that, rather, because, you know, we can't afford to cut vital services to New Yorkers. And so it's a function of robbing Peter to sustain Paul until we can raise other disciples to keep the mission moving. But it's too vital of a service, and how does it impact us? We have to, you know, we'll have to reduce, you know, if cuts continue, you know, you know, something has to go lacking. So if it's in income supports or another area, you know, that is just as important, but if we need to keep tax preparation whole, you know, so, yeah, it's a constant dance to make sure that our residents in the communities don't feel, we don't say to them, "Oh, listen, we got to do 1,000 less returns this year because we got cut." You know, I mean, they don't understand that.
Thank you very much to this panel for your testimony. We appreciate it.
Next panel will be Susan Kasapian, Anne McWhale, and Lori Cerroa.
Good afternoon, Chair Menon, and it's good to see you. As you know, I was at the Department of Consumer Affairs, now DCWP, for nearly 30 years as Assistant Commissioner, Special Counsel, Principal Administrative Law Judge, and then worked at Oath as Deputy Commissioner of the Hearings Division. I'm here to plead with your committee to fix a terrible problem caused by Oath, which robs consumers of millions of dollars in restitution and the city of millions of dollars in fines. What happened was when there was a transition of the adjudication of DCWP cases to Oath, Oath insisted that DCWP assign an attorney, an individual attorney, to each and every consumer case. This had not been done in 40 years, when DCA had its own tribunal. And this in spite of the fact that the Oath Hearing Division rules actually allow an agency to delegate the presentation of its cases to someone else. And it's also in spite of the fact that in 2021, DCWP promulgated a rule that allows restitution decisions to be docketed as a court judgment, obviating the need for any consumer to ever have to go to court. And yet, they do not bring these cases because of Oath's edict, and consumers are left in the lurch. Finally, when, after, I brought to the attention of the mayor that this trust fund, Home from a Trust Fund, had ballooned to $15 million, they did this 10,000 invasion rule. That $10,000 does nothing to enforce the laws. It does nothing to sanction the bad contractor who keeps on ripping off other people, and it does nothing to put fines in the city coffers that they're allowed to get. Furthermore, the trust fund will pay fines and restitutions if the licensees fail to pay. So this makes no sense.
I just am going to ask you to wrap up. I know you're going to submit the written, I know you'll submit the written testimony.
Yes, I do just want to point out in my remarks, I give a breakdown of the kind of money that was brought in restitution and fines when I was doing this work.
Yes, you've sent that, yes, you've sent it to me. Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Anne McWhale, and I'm here to testify that more money has to be allocated to DCWP. I'm going to tell you about my specific case. I own a brownstone in Brooklyn, New York, Bethel Stuyvesant. It's been in my family since 1935. The house next door burnt me out on February 13, 2018. The contractor took over $241,000. The public adjusting company took over $35,000. I have pictures here of how my house is, and I'm still not in my house today. I have a mortgage on that house that I pay $2,526 every month, and I've been paying that for 72 months, and I have not lived in the home. Why? Because the contractor took the money, and the insurance company now, my Liberty Insurance Company, will not give me any more money to fix the house. So I have to start over again, and I'm in a landmarked area. I have dwindled over $30,000 of my money in order to get permits and everything, and this is still going on. I just got the paperwork after six years to submit for the $10,000. This is not enough to even assist me. It should be more money. So totally, in the six years, I have spent over $223,162 on storage for my furniture for the six years, rent, and all the other things that I had to incur during this time. And I'm asking DCWP to allot more money for victims of contractors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Lori Cerroa. I'm also a homeowner who has been adversely affected when our contractor, who was licensed from the Department of Consumer Affairs and Worker Protection, deviated from the approved plans by the New York City Building Department during our renovation, leading to damages to our home and a renovation that would not meet the inspection standards. Despite our attempts to address the issues, the contractor refused to rectify the situation. As a result, I filed a complaint with the Department of Consumer Affairs and Worker Protection only to discover that it was ineffective and a waste of time, with a mediator looking for any excuse to close out the complaint. Without facing charges and proper oversight from the department, contractors may not feel compelled to address consumer complaints. Therefore, it is essential that your committee ensures that the Department of Consumer Affairs and Worker Protection resumes conducting consumer restitution hearings and receives adequate funding to do so. This will prevent others from becoming victims of unscrupulous contractors. I pleaded and begged for our case to be heard at the Office of the Administrative Trials and Hearings, but unfortunately, my request was consistently denied because, according to Commissioner Maynuga, in a letter addressed to me, "The department's tribunal, which allowed individual consumers to represent themselves against home and room contractors, seized operations over six years ago. Our cases are now heard by the Office of Administrative Trials and Hearings. As a result of that transition, Oath does not permit individual consumers to represent themselves, and the department does not represent individual consumers in new cases at Oath." That basically says, "Go fend for yourself." Despite my explanations to the mediator and DCWP staff, including the General Counsel's office, that going to court was not a viable option for us, I was consistently redirected there. Despite minimal efforts to mediate the complaints on their part, it was eventually closed out without a resolution. Our house was left in a desiré to do a deport construction. We cannot let this continue. The victims require assistance, which is why I'm here today. Agrieved homeowners need these cases adjudicated. We need a swift hearing at Oath that would provide homeowners with, you know, a quick resolution to their case so they're not left there. Look at Ms. Anne McNeil, who's been out of her house since 2018.
Thank you. Thank you very much to this panel. And if you want to submit your, if you haven't already, submit your written testimony. That would be very helpful. Thank you all so much. Thank you.
Next panel will be Kate Tisbus, Jacinda Frederick, Simone Daly, and Ontu Nugin.
You may begin.
Hello, Chair Menon, and thank you so much for hearing from all of us today. My name is Kate Tiskus. I work with an organization called Collective Public Affairs. And what I'm here today, to do today, is to emphasize both our support for more funding for DWCP because they're a necessary partner in all of the work that community organizations that I work with do, but also to remind the council that, that community-based organizations work in partnership with DCWP, and the council's initiative programs really amplify and fill the gaps that the department itself can't do. So I wanted to highlight three initiatives in particular. The first is the Workers Cooperative Business Development Initiative. They've been stuck at the same funding since pre-pandemic times, but they're one of the best options that we have, especially as more New Yorkers arrive every day, to organize people into worker-owner businesses, which can work even if your documents are not necessarily in order. Their modest funding increase requests are going to allow them to really up their capacity and to expand services which are already provided in all five bureaus. I also want to highlight the Domestic Workers and Employers Empowerment Initiative. We're going to hear from a lot of those folks, including in a minute or two, but they are able to reach folks that the department can't reach directly and to help provide avenues for protection and enforcement of rights that don't require going through Oath and that don't require the resources of the, of the, of the, sorry, lost the end of that sentence. And then finally, I wanted to bring up the Pride at Work Initiative, which also helps funnel LGBTQ New Yorkers into programs that allow them to have good union jobs. So initiative programs like these really help amplify and increase the worker's power. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Menon and Councilmembers of the committee. My name is Jacinda Frederick, and I'm a domestic worker and part of the New York City Coalition of Domestic Workers. As a nanny of 30-plus years, I look forward each day to making a difference in the lives of children I care for without dealing with discrimination or thought of being something less than human, like that time when I worked with a family who gave me a crawl space in an attic to sleep. Not only was it uncomfortable to even sit up halfway, but the smell of the space and the linens was unbearable. And on top of that, she did not want me to go home to my family. Another instance of another employer who had me work eight hours cleaning her home and gave me $18 at the end of the day. Do you know that domestic workers are three times more likely to live in poverty than other type of workers? The median annual income among New York City domestic workers is only $21,000. Can you imagine raising a family and living in a city comfortably on that salary while also likely sending money to loved ones far away? Along with low pay, we often face long work hours, sudden job loss, sexual harassment, and physical or verbal abuse. No one should have to live like that. No one should have to live that way or exist in a state of fear at work. We deserve protection, support, resources, and justice. We deserve to raise our families with dignity and opportunities to live with respect in this city that we contribute to so significantly. To do that, we need our city to have our back. That means removing the hiring freeze on DWCP, sorry, and supporting the Domestic Worker and Employer Empower Initiative, which will give much-needed funds for more outreach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good day. Thank you, Chair Menon and Councilmember on the Committee on Consumer Worker Protection of offering me the time to speak. My name is Simone Daly, and I am a domestic worker, part of the New York Coalition for Domestic Workers. We are a collective of domestic workers, employees, parents, and family caregivers, adult givers, and people with disability working together to transform New York City, New York City care economy into the equitable and sustainable for all workers' strive. The DCP is the only city agency tasked with supporting our city's over 200,000 domestic workers. As New York domestic workers, we are a nanny-natured, nurtured to raise your children, the Oath's cleaners who bring order to your homes, and the direct care workers who ensure your loved ones who are aging or living with disabilities receive the assistance they need to live with dignity and independence. Domestic workers do legitimate labor work, most precious and critical to our communities and our futures, and your futures, apologies. Our work is essential, and we do not, and we do the work that makes all our work, all your work, possible in this city. I will just now give you my experience or my testimony. I was working with a family in Manhattan, been there six months. Everything was smooth and good. I was looking after an elderly. She had dementia. The family was great and all. We clicked. However, out of no blues, I got a text from my phone the very day when I was supposed to return to work that, "I'm sorry, your service is no longer required as I'm making new decisions to take my mom into a nursing home." Now, that broke me, you know? It's your only source of income, and you were just traumatized. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your personal story. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Menon and members of New York City Council Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection. I'm Ontu Nguyen. I am the Director of Strategic Partnerships at Democracy at Work Institute, which is one of the 14 members of the Worker Cooperative Business Development Initiative, or WCPDI for short. Worker cooperative businesses have created through the WCPDI improved protections and industry standards. especially in traditionally low-wage, traditionally exploitative businesses in industries including home care, childcare, and cleaning and janitorial services. So I'm going to give a little bit of examples of what we've been able to achieve thanks to council's investment since fiscal year fifteen in the work that we're doing to just raise the floor for workers in these industries. Two of New York City's largest worker cooperative businesses, and also two of the largest in the United States period, are Cooperative Home Care Associates and Cise Puere. They are in low-wage industries that are dominated by immigrant women of color, specifically home care and cleaning and janitorial services. CHCA, Cooperative Home Care Associates, has a workforce of over sixteen-hundred people, half of whom are worker owners. Ninety-eight percent of them are women and BIPOC women, immigrant women at that. Home care is traditionally, and still, a very low-wage, extremely high-turnover industry where the conditions are not great, to say the very least. But with CHCA, through its model and its innovative workforce development training model specifically, has really improved job standards and quality, job quality standards across the board that have become a national model. So for example, the six-hundred-and-thirty job seekers that are enrolled with CHCA's training program, ninety-four percent of them graduate with a portable credential, eighty-five percent are employed as home health aides, and sixty-eight percent remain employed, compared to twenty-nine percent nationally and thirty-eight percent remaining enrolled after their first year. So I will submit more testimony, but we urge City Council to continue investing in worker cooperatives in fiscal year twenty-five through WCBTI funding of four-point-nine-two million dollars that will allow for continuing these high-road businesses and support for the industry. Thank you.
Thank you all. Our next panel will be Abigail Dorson, Abel Hernandez, and David Portella. You may begin.
Thank you, Chairman Menon, for allowing us to speak on this panel. My name is Abigail Dorson, and I am the Organizing Manager at La Colmena. We are an immigrant and workers' rights center based on Staten Island. Our mission is to empower the immigrant worker through education, culture, organizing. We are also a member of the New York City Coalition for Domestic Workers. The coalition is made up of the National Domestic Workers Alliance, Adekar Carroll Gardens Association, La Colmena, Hen and Damean. Every day, our organization hear from workers who have experienced wage theft, abuse, discrimination, unjustified firing, and much more. This is why we are grateful to continue partnering up with the Department of Consumer and Workers Protection as together we work on preventing this from happening. Through our work, we continue being in the forefront to support our new neighbors so they know about their rights at the workplace. Our movement has celebrated significant legislative wins since 2010, including the New York Domestic Worker Bill of Right, the NYC Paid Safe and Slick Leave, and recently Local Law Eighty-One, which incorporates domestic workers in the New York City Human Rights Law. There is still much work ahead to get this message across, especially as new arrivals are entering the workforce and are amongst the most... and are amongst the most vulnerable in this sector. This year, we request your support for the Domestic Worker and Employer Empowerment Initiative for FY25, which will provide seven-hundred-thousand dollars in much more needed funding for outreach, education, enforcement support to over eight-thousand domestic workers and employers this year, which is why we ask you to push for the removal of the twenty-twenty-five hiring freeze for DCWP so together we can work more effectively. Thank you.
All right. Sorry if I'm a little bit nervous. Good afternoon, council. I'm here on behalf of the repeal of the, what is it? Twenty-two ninety-four? Sorry, I'm, this is my first time. Basically, I don't, I'm asking for a repeal because this is really, really bad. I've been doing app delivery since 2018, and it's been going fine up until they passed this, what is it, bill? I'm sorry. I'm nervous. But it's really affecting me because I used to be able to make enough money. Now, I'm getting like fourteen, twenty hours a week. And it's really hurting me because since the app-delivery people are trying to fight back, they're really reducing our hours. And there's a lot of people doing deliveries in New York City, and it really, really hurts. Like, I went from getting at least forty hours a week to getting twenty hours a week. And that is, how am I supposed to live on twenty hours a week? And what hurts me the most is I actually love what I do. I love this job, as well as these fine people behind me. And I think this bill is really not doing us any good because now we have to go around the city and find a place to be busy in order for us to even try to make some money, or we have to compete with other workers to get a time slot. And that's very bad. Imagine you working at your job, and you, your hours are fine, and then the next thing you know, you're working twenty hours, fourteen hours a week. It's really not helping us. And I'm asking for this, for the repeal of this bill or law because it is terrible. It's terrible. I've been doing this, I do at least two-hundred, two-hundred-fifty deliveries a week. And now I'm reduced to doing like twenty deliveries a day. And to be honest with you, right now, doing Uber, ten deliveries is like fifty bucks. And that's, is really not helping any of us. It's not benefiting me. It's not benefiting these fine people right here because we work hard to bring everybody their food and everything that we have to dodge in New York City.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Hola, ¿qué tal? Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Abel Hernandez, trabajador de DoorDash.
Good afternoon. My name is Abel Hernandez. I'm a worker with DoorDash.
Estamos acá porque tenemos una situación muy difícil de verdad con DoorDash. Como él mencionaba hace un momento, las cosas realmente no nos han beneficiado con estas nuevas leyes.
Well, we are here because I'm a, I'm an app worker with DoorDash, and we have a serious issue with the apps.
Un ejemplo muy breve y para que sea fácil para él también es, por ejemplo, esta mañana, yo vine a las ocho de la mañana, solo logré tomar hora y media, llegué a las ocho, terminé a las nueve y media, y de ahí no pude lograr, no logré hacer más horas. Me preparé para estar en este lugar, y esto es lo que hice esta mañana.
Basically, what he's saying that he's having difficulties with logging in and hours. He's not getting the hours to work.
Hay una situación con la aplicación de Dorres, por ejemplo. Tiene tres niveles. Está la plata, el oro, y platino, que es el máximo. Yo soy el máximo. Pero qué sucede, que yo no tengo ningún beneficio por ser el mejor. Entonces, ¿dónde está el beneficio? Yo no tomo ningún, yo no tengo, no tengo beneficios porque me cuesta mucho hacer tres, cuatro horas diarias.
So basically, he's saying that he has the highest status on the app. There's three different levels, platinum, gold, and diamond. And he's having issues. Even being at a high-rate performer with the apps, he's still getting very little hours of work.
Cuando digo poquitas, pocas horas, estamos hablando de dieciséis horas a la semana, si es que te fue bien. Y si llovió, podríamos estar hablando de un poquito más. Pero de lo contrario, estamos en una situación muy precaria. Pido, por favor, que reboquen esta ley, o en el mejor, en el mejor de los casos, que le den una revisión exhausta.
He's basically making sixteen hours a week, and he's having much difficulties working. And he asked for a repeal of twenty-two ninety-four. That's what he's asking for. Thank you.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you all very much.
Next panel is Octavio Lopez, Prospero Martinez, and Juan. You may begin.
Hello, guys. My name is Octavio Lopez. I am a delivery driver of the city for over ten years. And the reason why I'm here today is because I have a complaint over this new law that has been having and causing us a lot of trouble with our job. We have, we used to be fine when we used to be independent contractors, but now we have a lot of issues. We have no schedules in the city or the boroughs around. We are also not getting paid by the hour. We are getting paid by an active, active time, which means that we can be in the streets for over ten hours, and we are getting paid for only for the active hours that we have delivering the food. And this is really awful for us. This is really not helping us at all. And I wish you guys can take a look and see all the drivers today here. We have, we are here for the same reason. Most of my coworkers, they don't speak English really well. And I don't either. But I hope you guys listen to me right now and take, and count all the drivers that we are here. We have complaints over this law, and we want, we want you guys to repeal this law because when, it could be a law, but if it's wrong, it doesn't mean it's right if it's a law. So we want you to guys work on that, and please repeal this law. It's hurting, this law is hurting most of the drivers, Hispanic drivers. We have been getting a lot of lockouts, and, but we're still working. But we want you to guys help us, help us. And I have a letter for you. I want to hand it to you. I have my signature on it. I'm a delivery driver. Please, we are speaking real drivers, the ones who are behind, when you get a hat food in your door, we are behind that job. We are doing that, if, any weather, any time, and we want to make money. We want, we want you to guys do something for us. This is the main reason we are here. None of these organizations are helping us. None of these organizations are taking care of us. As you see, there was a leader of an organization right now on this, on this chair, but she stepped away because that means she's not really helping the drivers. Please, and thank you so much for listening to me. I also want to hand this to you. And I have your picture. Would you help us?
Okay. Thank you.
Please, would you help us?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Hola, mi nombre es Juan Solano. Soy un repartidor de comida de aquí de la ciudad de Nueva York.
Good afternoon. My name is Juan Solano, and I'm a delivery worker here in the city.
Llevo muchos años haciendo este tipo de trabajo, arriesgando mi vida en las calles de la ciudad de Nueva York.
I've been doing this work for many years, risking my life doing food deliveries here in New York City.
Lo cual vengo a manifestar mi inconformidad en contra de esta supuesta ley que nos va según a beneficiar, lo cual no nos está beneficiando.
I'm here to say I am displeased with this law, that it's not benefiting us.
Muchos compañeros han sido bloqueados, muchas estadísticas que no salen a la luz, de cuánta gente se quedó sin empleo al entrar en vigor esta ley.
With the commencement, with the commencement of this law, workers have been being locked out. They're getting locked out, and they're not being given access to the applications, and they're not being able to work.
Muchos clientes creen que nosotros ya ganamos muy bien, lo cual las aplicaciones limitan a que ellos pongan el tip. Y en realidad, nosotros anteriormente nos ayudaba más la propina que el pago.
A lot of customers think that we're making good money because the tips were...
Que los clientes no pueden dejar mucha propina porque creen que nosotros ganamos bien.
Oh, so customers... Oh, so customers believe that the workers are now making better money because of the minimum wage. And the, the option for tipping was in the beginning of the process when you're ordering, and now it's not. And they're not being tipped.
Suplicamos a las autoridades correspondientes someter una revisión a esta ley ya que nosotros ya no nos beneficia y solo trabajamos tres, cuatro horas al día.
¿Quiere revisarlo? ¿Quiere quitarlo?
Quitar.
Uh, they're not working enough and they're asking that the, the, the law be repealed. He's asking for repeal of the law. He was asking for repeal of the law because it's not helping. They have less hours. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hola, que tal? Muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Prospero Martínez. Actualmente soy trabajador deliverista de la aplicación Uber Eats. A nombre del Comité Central de Repartidores que hoy dignamente se presentan con nosotros, queremos hacer hincapié y pedirle atentamente a ustedes que la ley se someta a una revisión general.
Uh, my name is... My name is Prospero Martínez and we asking that the bill twenty-two ninety-four be revised or looked at. Dime de nuevo. We have, we have, we have a committee of delivery workers and we asking that you uh, take a look at this bill.
Pedimos una revisión general.
Revisión?
Revisión.
No, no quiere que la quiten.
No, revisión general.
Asking for a general review of this bill.
Para que puedan participar, para que puedan participar los verdaderos repartidores y no intermediarios.
So the true workers can work and no one, uh, no other third parties.
No puede ser posible que organizaciones o personas ajenas a los repartidores hablen a nuestro nombre cuando nosotros somos los que trabajamos en las calles.
It is not fair that other organizations are speaking for us when we are the ones working in the streets.
Esta ley desde su origen fue formulada desde la comodidad del café y el sofá de algunos pseudo líderes que no representan al trabajador. Que esta, cómo se llama, esta ley fue formulada desde, con la visión de algunos pseudo líderes.
This, this, this bill was created with a few individuals basically from a sofa, reading, uh, coming up with the idea of this bill.
Por eso hoy pedimos la revisión para ver o analizar la viabilidad de la ley o en su defecto, la derogación total.
He basically asking for review the bill and possibly repealing the bill.
Que viva el pueblo digno trabajador.
Long live the worker. Sorry, I'm trying my best.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Our next panel will be our last in-person panel before we turn to Zoom. Paulman Castillo, Leonardo, and Raul Rivera.
Buenas tardes, este, lo que estamos nosotros haciendo ahorita es muy duro. Me llamo Leonardo Gonzalez. Este, estoy siendo delivery aquí, ya llevo como, como cuatro años siendo delivery, pero...
My, my name is Ronaldo Gonzalez and I've been working in the city for about four years.
Sí, este, las cosas bueno, se puso un poco complicado. Este, ya los que, lo que cambiaron es la ley, ese ya están dando un poco este complicado y bueno, para salir adelante porque ya no tan, ya no tenemos casi, eh, el trabajo casi, bueno estamos buscando mucho tiempo.
The, the situation is getting difficult and it's hard to get ahead. Uh, we continue to not have access to the applications.
Eh, sí, a ver si nos pueden ayudar, a chequear y qué es lo que está pasando, bueno, si nos puede ayudar. Y eso es lo que estamos pasando nosotros, bueno, si podrían ayudar, verdad, con humildemente. Porque nosotros no, lo que queremos trabajar, este... Ajá, sí, queremos que la quiten la ley, aunque no sé cómo lo van a hacer, pero o sea, estábamos, este, haciendo lo posible para, así, agarramos todo, le delivery como viene, pero pero ya no hay tan buen conocimiento como este, la ley está haciendo, yo no sé mucho, pero viene. Me invitaron y me vine con los amigos.
We was, we was better off before the lay, before the, uh, the... We was better off before the law was enacted. We asking for help from the committee to re, to repeal this law.
Sí, este, hacemos muchas horas, este, muy difícil para, mucho tiempo, cuando ellos nos dan más chance de trabajar y a veces cuando no hay, este, pues tenemos que, este, hacer lo posible.
And they're having difficulty working because they have to get on a, a schedule just to get access to the app so they can work and it's very, very difficult. That's it? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm next, right? So, uh... Okay, uh, my name is Raul Rivera. I'm a TLC driver and I'm a TLC driver advocate. TLC drivers are independent workers. What we have behind here, behind me is a bunch of independent workers. And we have a union, Thirty-two BJ. We have the Workers' Justice Project. We even have elected officials who are not respecting the independent worker. This committee is about protecting workers, whether you're an employee or you're independent. And taking the status away of an independent worker creates a lot of problems. The issues that we have in here today, the drivers, the delivery guys, is because that status is not respected. Thirty-two BJ, council member Brad Lander at the time drafted that bill, twenty-two ninety-four. And because of them, it passed. And just because it passed doesn't mean it was the right thing. We want that bill to be repealed. And we're gonna fight hard. We asking you, we asking your committee to take this challenge on. These individuals are gonna ask you sooner or later to do this, repeal this bill. We ask you to stand with your committee. If you can't, if they can't stand with you, then we ask that you stand alone. Repeal this twenty-two ninety-four that doesn't respect the status of an independent worker. Also, Thirty-two BJ likes to tout about worker rights. We have a complaint from many of the porters at Thirty-two BJ who put in a grievance more than a year and a half ago. And yet, they haven't gotten a response. So I don't, I'm not sure how Thirty-two BJ is advocating for the worker. They also pushed this bill. They were in front of the courthouse talking about worker rights. Israel Melendez. He said worker rights. But when it comes to the rights of, of the members, they're not being heard. We just had a strike in front of Thirty-two BJ. He came out. He said a couple of words and then he took off. He, he can't even sit down and meet with us like, you know, as human beings. He said he defends the workers, but he can't sit down with us. He only sits down with the people that are willing to listen to him.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to wrap up.
We asked for repeal of this law. We're gonna reach out to your office. We thank you for the time.
Okay, um, are there any more members of the public in person?
Not in person.
Okay, we're now gonna switch to virtual testimony. We have a number of members of the public online.
Thank you, Chair. Our first panel will be Natasha Severin, followed by Tally Smith, followed by Megan Cash.
You may begin.
Natasha, you may begin.
Uh, I'm trying to start the video. Um, thank you for opportunity to testify the city council. My name is Natasha Severin. I'm a retired senior citizen. I lived in New York twenty-two years, last few years in Natchez senior building. I want to support my movement ACLU in their demand to disband SRG. Why? Let us speak about American moral values. Police nature changed for the last years for wars. NYPD is becoming more and more punitive organization. Which matters reminds me former KGB and current Putin's squad among. And it is for, it is not for democratic society. Here are a few examples from my life. Not long ago, I was attacked in my building. I called nine-one-one. The police came in two hours. When I approached them in delay, officer told me, "If you will not stop criticizing us, we place you to the mental institution for COVID-damaged patient." I didn't have COVID at that time, but I was smashed by the fact that police have right to use punitive psychiatry against citizens who are using the First Amendment. It is happening only to totalitarian countries. Another case. Months in the morning, police together with Natchez broke down the door in my apartment when I was at home and resisted this illegal intrusion. Ten minutes, the door stated that they must check a leak in my bathroom. But they didn't look at any leak. Instead of this, they made a search for drugs without any warrant. They checked my drugs, sniffed detergents and roach sprays in the bathroom. And then, when they didn't find anything because I saw drugs, only the movies, they left without apology. Two Natchez workers later confessed to me that they were persuaded to do this illegal search by police. Now, police have tremendous budget. This money is being misused for revenge, excessive surveillance and intrigues against innocent citizens. I wrote twelve complaints to CCRB, two complaints to the mayor office. I didn't get even one response. Police misanthropic, unlawful, arbitrary actions are going unpunished.
We thank you for your testimony. Your time has expired.
Okay. SRG is very dangerous tool. I cannot be, it cannot be, it can be handled properly only by a high moral organization. New NYPD in his current moral condition may use it only in a powerful way. It is unacceptable in the great democratic America.
Please wrap up your testimony. Your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tally Smith, you may begin your testimony.
Good afternoon. Mothers on the Move, Madres en Movimiento, otherwise known as MOM, in the South Bronx, organizes people of color to build solutions to systemic injustice since nineteen ninety-two. For five years, we have supported WCBDI, the Worker-Owned Business Development Initiative, and want to thank the council for our direct contract this year. Our neighbors are in the bottom of the economic ladder, working long hours for poor wages. By supporting WCBDI, you empower wraparound support, education and technical assistance to build shared businesses that open pathways out of poverty and resolve problems like childcare shortages, energy inefficiency and multifamily buildings in need of retrofits. I'd like to speak specifically to a current dynamic facing our home daycares. Providers ensure children stay safe and develop healthy social skills while their parents, often frontline workers, serve our city. Hundreds of daycares have shut down due to confusing regulations and low pay. MOM stepped up to organize experienced providers to train and mentor new ones and advocate for improved industry standards. Right now, ACS vouchers are two hundred and fifty dollars per week, which totals one hundred and fifty thousand per year for a daycare qualified for twelve children. This is insufficient to pay two professional adults, much less cover business costs. Worse, our pandemic babies, NYC's youngest consumers, are all behind in language and social development, which requires additional skilled workers to provide specialized care. There is a waiting list of over a year in the Bronx to get the assessment necessary for special needs subsidies. As a result, our home daycare owners, all women of color, are left earning four dollars and twenty-five cents an hour. This could be the basis of a class action lawsuit against the city. We ask you to increase childcare subsidies, expedite special needs assessment and increase WCBDI funding to grow the critical work of organizations like ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan Cash, you may begin your testimony.
My name is Megan Cash. I'm an everyday New Yorker. I live in Williamsburg. My partner and I are artists. We are adjunct teachers at local art schools. Our income is limited. In two thousand twelve, an adjacent developer damaged our home. We were screwed. Fast forward eight years and we were finally able to hire a home improvement contractor to repair the damage. But this contractor turned out to be worse than the developer who did the initial damage. He didn't follow architectural plans, he removed the old roof and our house leaked continuously for more than a year. He refused to install a new finished roof until we paid him more money, that he was not contractually owed. And when we didn't agree to this extortion, he walked off the job. We thought the contractor was licensed, licensed, but he had let it expire during COVID. We filed a complaint with DCWP. We were told they couldn't help us because the contractor wasn't licensed at the time. Yet because of our DCWP complaint, the city wrote this contractor violation. The contractor had to pay fines to the city and he is now a licensed NYC home improvement contractor. He's licensed and we're still screwed. We hope the city will make a choice to resume expedited consumer restitution oath hearings. This committee should make sure there is proper funding for DCWP to be able to resume drafting cases like ours for hearings. We understand that these hearings can be converted into court judgments under six RC NY six dash zero six, which would be amazing for us. We are now in our sixties and DCWP is telling us, "Good luck. Go spend another eight years in the court system." The city used to make contractors pay into the trust fund for the year a complaint was made against them. It's a kick in the gut for us that this practice has now ended. My partner and I still want a hearing. In order to be relicensed, the contractor signed an agreement with the city that he would attempt to fully resolve all consumer complaint, complaints related to...
Thank you for your testimony. Your time has expired.
Okay, the city is not, DCWP is not even holding contractors...
I need to ask you to wrap up your testimony.
Okay, they're not even holding contractors to their own agreement. And it's just totally absurd and terrible for us. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And if you want to, you're submitting your testimony in writing?
Yes.
Full testimony. Terrific. And we appreciate you taking the time to testify. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next panel will be Alice Davis, followed by Tito Sinha, followed by Catherine Mersick, followed by Malat Sayum. Alice Davis, you may begin your testimony.
Okay. Uh, thank you to the members of the committee for providing me with the opportunity to testify today. My name is Alice Davis and I'm the managing attorney at the Employment Law Unit at Catholic Migration Services. Catholic Migration Services is a nonprofit legal services organization with offices in Brooklyn Heights and in Sunnyside, Queens. We serve low-income and immigrant New Yorkers on a variety of issues. Uh, we're also members of the Citywide Immigrant Legal Empowerment Collaborative, otherwise known as SILIC. This is a collaborative of several legal services providers and other community-based organizations that provides legal services and case management to low-income and immigrant workers. I am urging the city council to renew and increase funding for the Low Wage Worker Support Initiative at three million dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty-five. This is the only city funding that provides workers' rights legal services to low-wage immigrant workers, allowing us to provide our clients with free legal advice and representation. These services are necessary. Our clients include both recent arrivals and longtime New Yorkers in all five boroughs who work in low-wage industries such as construction, food service and commercial cleaning services. As the members of the committee are probably aware, immigrant workers are for a variety of reasons. Much more vulnerable to exploitation in the workplace, including wage theft, sexual harassment and paid sick and safe violations. This funding is well-invested. During the previous fiscal year, the SILIC consortium, which is the group of legal services providers that I'm representing today, uh, turned about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of low-wage worker support funding into over three million dollars worth of settlements and judgments, uh, that go directly into the pockets of our clients. It's something that's appreciated by our clients who rely on us for high-quality and culturally competent legal services and it's something that's appreciated, I believe, by city and state agencies because we help reduce their caseloads and, and the burden of their work. Right now, in addition to requirements, I think for next year...
Your time has expired.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tito Sinha, you may begin your testimony.
Thank you. Um, my name is Tito Sinha. I am the Director of Workers' Rights at Take Root Justice, an organization... an organization that along with Catholic Migration Services is part of this SILIC consortium. We join Catholic Migration Services for the call to renew the Low Wage Worker Support Initiative. Because of the low-wage worker funding, we have been able to represent low-wage workers with claims of sick leave violation, sick leave retaliation, and wage theft before DCWP. Because of DCWP's robust enforcement of the Safe and Sick Leave Act, workers have been able to receive redress for employer's denial of sick leave, retaliatory termination, and failure to provide notice of rights. They've been able to recover back pay, sick leave pay, and statutory penalties. Take Group has also participated in the first mediation held through DCWP's paid care mediation program for domestic workers. Majority, vast number of our clients are domestic workers, so we appreciate to see so many domestic workers out here, you know, to speak regarding their experiences. We really need the Low Wage Worker Support Initiative funding to be renewed, and we also call for DCWP's funding to be increased. We are very appreciative of DCWP having an online portal and having a robust enforcement mechanism, certainly relative to other administrative agencies. And we appreciate the work of their council and their investigators. We just want the enforcement to be more robust and as robust as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Mersick, you may begin your testimony.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify online today. My name is Catherine Mersick. I'm a worker-owner at Samimkaya Yoga Back Care and Scoliosis Collective. We are a member of the New York City Network of Worker Cooperatives, which is a partner in the Worker Cooperative Business Development Initiative. And your support of our community of democratically-run businesses helps to protect and create jobs for women, immigrant workers, and communities of color across the five boroughs and in a wide array of industries. I'm testifying today to urge you to help our city continue with a just recovery by continuing that support of WCBDI, enhancing their funding to 4.9 million, and to also support commercial rent stabilization to help protect New York City's workers and small businesses from displacement. My co-op, Samimkaya, is a lovely little studio in Chelsea. We specialize in therapeutic yoga for back care with classes online and in studio. I'm proud to say my 19 other worker owners and I have been democratically running the studio in the same space for the last nine years. And to make yoga accessible to all ages and abilities, we use very specialized rope walls and equipment, which did incur a lot of startup costs that we are still paying back to this day. However, our cooperative business structure makes us unique in yoga studios in New York and is part of the reason we were able to survive through the pandemic when a lot of other yoga studios sadly did not make it. Even though the pandemic forced us to close our physical space, we banded together to decide as a team how to pivot, divide the labor. We worked together to keep the studio afloat while also making sure teachers who most needed to work could keep teaching online and make ends meet. We were also grateful to have access to technical support from WCBDI partners and a couple of small grants specific to worker co-ops. One example is Nickknock's Cooperative Sustainability Fund, which helped us pay for consulting sessions with another co-op for communication and distribution of labor challenges and to help us strategize for the future. However, our future is still uncertain since our client numbers still haven't recovered to pre-pandemic levels, and our rent will continue to make large jumps over the next eight years.
Your time has expired.
Okay, I'll just quickly, quickly wrap up. Just to say that because of this inability to plan for the future, commercial rent stabilization would really help co-ops and other small businesses to be able to plan, to be able to access, to level the playing field so that we're not faced with massive jumps in rent at the end of a lease, which is... Okay. So thank you.
Because we've got to have everyone have the same amount of time. So if you could just please submit your testimony in writing to the committee, that would be great.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Malat Sayum, you may begin your testimony.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Honorable Chairperson Menon and distinguished members of the New York City Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection. My name is Malat Sayum, and I'm the Director of Political Affairs and Strategic Partnerships at the New York City Network of Worker-Owned Cooperatives, also known as Nickknock. We are the local trade association representing worker cooperative businesses and democratic workplaces in New York City metropolitan area. I'm here alongside my colleagues from the Center for Life, Family Life, the Democracy at Work Institute, Mothers on the Move, Brightly Cleaning Cooperatives, and our advocacy council members, representing 11 other organizations that make up the Worker Cooperative Business Development Initiative, WCBDI. We are here asking the New York City Council to continue supporting the expansion of worker ownership in next year's budget and firmly into the future. Since the inception of the initiative, we have created over 197 new worker cooperative businesses and over 1,200 new jobs that are not only providing higher hourly wages, but also building wealth and assets for individuals who are overwhelmingly BIPOC, BIPOC women, and immigrants. We have seen firsthand how the initiative has served to bolster our sector, strengthening existing cooperative businesses and creating new ones. The initiative partners have collectively worked to create a comprehensive ecosystem of support for cooperative businesses that not only ensures the creation of new cooperatives in low-income areas, but also the technical assistance needed to sustain businesses and create jobs, as well as the education outreach needed for our communities, interested entrepreneurs, and allied organizations. We did a ton of work during COVID to bring over $10 million in grants and loans to cooperatives and keep them afloat. We did this with a $3.8 million budget. Our ask is where it was pre-COVID. We ask that City Council enhance our funding to 4.9 million in order for our initiative to double down and really do the work that is necessary to build a long-term economic recovery for cooperatives that will need to claw ourselves out of this crisis. We thank the City Council for the opportunity to testify and hope that you consider our budget priorities recommendations in this year's budget negotiation process. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final Zoom panel will be Amalia De La Iglesia, followed by Magali Alva, followed by Noraberta Flores. You may begin your testimony.
Thank you, members of the committee, for giving us the opportunity to present this testimony on our co-op development program and WCBDI, which funds this important work. My name is Amalia. I'm Assistant Director of Center for Family Life's Cooperative Development Program. Center for Family Life in Sunset Park is a neighborhood-based social services organization that has been rooted in Sunset Park, Brooklyn for over 45 years, providing a comprehensive range of wraparound family and social services to the community. CFL's Co-op Development Program emerged in response to the need for dignified, safe, and fair-wage work opportunities for the immigrant and low-income communities that we work with. Since 2014, our co-op development program has been part of WCBDI, the Worker Cooperative Business Development Initiative, supported by the council through which organizations like ours incubate and grow worker-owned businesses. Thanks to this annual support, CFL has incubated 25 co-op businesses in the domestic work industry, organizing more than 500 immigrant women of color to take control of their workplaces and their lives. Co-op members earn, on average, double the industry standard hourly wage. All of this important support for New York City's workers wouldn't be possible without the support of the City Council and continued funding for WCBDI. We're asking that the New York City Council fund WCBDI at 4.9 million for fiscal year 2025. Continued investment in worker-owned co-op businesses is essential in the fight for worker protection and a more equitable New York City. Thank you so much for the support. I'll also be translating for the two members of some of the co-ops that we've incubated who are speaking after me.
Thank you. Magali Alva, you'll have four minutes with the interpreter to testify. You may begin.
Magali, puedes empezar. Hola, buenas tardes a todos. Muchas gracias al Consejo por la oportunidad de presentar mi testimonio. Amalia? Sí, adelante. Mi nombre es Magali Alba y soy miembro, dueña, de la cooperativa Brightly. Y estoy aquí para hablar sobre lo importante que ha sido para mí en lo personal pertenecer a esta cooperativa. Pertenecer a una cooperativa ha cambiado completamente la perspectiva de lo que era un trabajo justo. Ahora siento que realmente valoran lo que yo hago. Ahora sé lo que es un trabajo justo. Ahora siento que realmente valoran todo lo que yo hago. Puedo manejar mis horarios y más que todo dedicarle tiempo a mi familia. Pienso que es importante también y muy necesario sostener y desarrollar cooperativas en el estado de Nueva York. Muchas gracias.
Good afternoon to everyone. Thanks to the council for the opportunity to present our testimonial. My name is Magali Alba, and I'm member-owner of the cooperative Brightly. I'm here to talk about how important it's been for me to be part of this cooperative. Being in a cooperative has completely changed my perspective of what a fair job is. Now I feel that what I do is truly valued. I know what a fair job is. Everything I do is valued. I can control my own schedule and, most importantly, dedicate more time to my family. I think it's important and very necessary to support and develop more cooperatives in New York. Thank you.
Thank you. Noraberta Flores, you may begin your testimony.
Noraberta, puedes empezar. Gracias, Amalia. Buenas tardes al Consejo por darme la oportunidad de dar mi experiencia. Mi nombre es Noraberta Flores de la cooperativa Alba y Tibet. Me ha ayudado mucho ya que pongo mi propio horario y mi disponibilidad de trabajo. Me ha ayudado en mis ingresos y a tener un salario justo como trabajadora de la cooperativa. Me ha ayudado mucho a tener un salario justo. Y ya que en otros trabajos hay explotación laboral. Antes de entrar a la cooperativa ganaba $15 la hora. Al integrarme a la cooperativa ganó el doble. Estoy muy agradecida por estas oportunidades de la cooperativa. Muchas gracias.
Good afternoon to the council. Thanks for the opportunity to share my experience. My name is Noraberta Flores of the cooperative Brightly Tribeca. The co-op has helped me a lot now that I can choose my own schedule and availability for work. It has helped with my income and to earn a fair salary as a worker in the co-op, since in other jobs there's a lot of exploitation. Before joining the co-op, I earned $15 an hour, and since joining the co-op, I earned double that. I'm very grateful for these opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. If we have inadvertently missed anyone who has registered to testify today and has yet to be called, use the Zoom hand function, and you will be called on in the order that your hand is raised. That includes Jose Lopez. Not seeing any hands, I will turn it over to Chairman Menon to close out.
Thank you very much. We want to thank the administration, the members of the public who testified today on this important budget hearing. We're going to be digging in in terms of this testimony, and it will be a continuing process. But we thank everyone for their participation, and this will now close the hearing.